I will call to order the February 23 meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. You have a roll call?
Roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner Comerly?
Here.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Present.
Vice Chair Flores?
Here.
Chair Donaldson?
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Well, the first item on our agenda after these little formalities is the swearing in of our new planning commissioner, Shawn Moss.
If you'd like to stand up, and you can either swear or affirm, and rather than me saying it and repeating, you can just read it.
Okay. I, Shawn Moss, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Planning Commissioner Moss.
All right. Welcome, Commissioner Moss. Do you'd like to say any comments on arriving here?
Sure. Thanks, Chair Donaldson. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm pleased to be here. I take great pride in my residence in Emeryville, and I just am pleased to be serving the city in this way. So, it's, yeah, it's great to be here. It's great to have already met some of you, and, yeah, it's nice to be working with a good group of individuals.
Well, welcome, and thank you.
If I may make a comment, by the way, for anybody who doesn't happen to know, that mystery woman over there doing the swearing in was City Clerk Karen Hemphill, although she didn't introduce herself. I'd just like to note that Shawn has been a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee for at least a couple of years, I guess, and I'm not sure if you've served on any other committees for the city, but I know he's certainly been an active member of that. Shawn is also a professional planner by trade for the city of El Cerrito, and he's been on both sides of the dais. He kind of sits in my chair at the El Cerrito Planning Commission meeting, so he's going to keep me on my toes, I'm sure.
Okay, this is the time on the agenda for public comment from anyone who wants to speak on an item that's not on the rest of our agenda. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll move on to the action recap, the minutes from the last meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Without any, we would have one abstention from Commissioner Moss, and without any objections, I think we can approve those.
Okay.
All right. Charlie, the Director's Report.
All right. With regard to recent City Council actions, the council met on February 7th and on February 21st. On the 7th, they had a study session about cost-effective and efficient fire services, and then they directed that a contract be developed with the Alameda County Fire Department to provide fire services for the city of Emeryville effective July 1st. This was the result of a consultant study and the recommendation of the Fire Service Task Force, and it has the overwhelming support of the Emeryville Firefighters Union. So, as of the beginning of the next fiscal year, you'll be seeing the same firefighters, but their patches on their arms will say Alameda County as opposed to city of Emeryville. The mayor and city manager repeated the state of the city address that they had given at a Chamber of Commerce luncheon on January 26th, which included a discussion of the future outlook for the city in the post-redevelopment era. The water-efficient landscaping ordinance, which had been introduced on January 17th, was passed on February 7th, and it will take effect on March 8th. The council passed the ordinance removing the regulations of signs in the public right-of-way from the zoning ordinance. It had been previously amended as directed by the council on December 20th to add language prohibiting harassing signs, and it was introduced on January 17th. It will take effect on March 8th. The council also passed two ordinances to move the regulation for farmers' markets to a new chapter of the municipal code and to delete them from the chapter regulating street vendors where they had been. Both of those ordinances were introduced on January 17th and will take effect on March 8th. The Emery Station West Heritage Square Garage, also known as Transit Center Project, which, as you may recall, was approved by the council back in February of, let's see, 2010, I guess, and had a two-year approval at that time and would have expired this month, was extended for another two years by the council, so that use permit and design review approval now expires in February of 2014. The council approved the Paper Mill Park design that you previously weighed in on with a caveat that the lawn should be a natural meadow grass, similar to what's at the Marina Park. With that small change, they approved the design that you previously saw. Of course, as you know, the council appointed Shawn Moss to replace Planning Commissioner Art Hoff, who resigned in December. And the council also heard a report on the Sustainable Community Strategy under SB 375 that has been prepared by A-BAG and MTC. You previously weighed in on that and reviewed staff's responses to A-BAG and MTC's questionnaire. You did request that we change one answer, as you may recall, which we did, and the council agreed with that. They had no further changes, and so we passed that information along to A-BAG and MTC. At their most recent meeting on Tuesday night, February 21st, the council approved the Alameda County Transportation Commission's draft transportation expenditure plan, which is for the proposed extension and expansion of the Measure B sales tax. Under that proposal, which is going to be on this coming November's ballot, the sales tax will double from a half cent to a full cent and will be in perpetuity. And the council also discussed their policy for appointing members to vacancies on committees, boards, and commissions, including the Planning Commission. In the future, the Planning Commission will not be asked to make a recommendation on appointments. Instead, the city council is going to hold interviews for applicants at a special meeting, which will be held on the second, at the second council meeting in May, which is the third Tuesday in May, probably about 5:00 or 5:30 PM prior to the normal council meeting. And they'll interview all the applicants, and they will then make their appointment in June prior to the commission's July meeting. At this point, it's unclear whether incumbent commissioners will be required to participate in these interviews if they're seeking reappointment. We will let you know when the new procedures are finalized and exactly what they say. The city council, next Tuesday, February 28th, will be holding a visioning retreat as the first step in the development of the upcoming budget for the next two fiscal years and an updated capital improvement program. Staff is going to present key elements of the community vision that have been adopted by the council to date, specifically the general plan and other plans and programs that have flowed from that, as well as related background information, and then the council is expected to give direction as to its priorities in implementing the community vision over the next two years to inform the development of the budget and capital improvement program. The meeting is going to begin at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. It'll be facilitated by Daniel Isafano of MIG, who helped to facilitate general plan workshops and meetings, as you may recall. Couple of other things, the Center of Community Life has an upcoming workshop. That will be on Saturday, March 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the secondary school. And finally, this exhibit out here in the link, the PG&E Zero Architecture at Zero exhibit, which has been up since the middle of January, is coming down tomorrow, so if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, this is your last chance. So, that's my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Charlie?
I have one question. Does the, I'm just curious if the water-efficient landscaping ordinance that was adopted, does it differ and kind of in what ways generally from the model ordinance that would have, I guess ostensibly, gone into effect last year?
I'll let the author respond to that.
It is basically the same. It included some requests from StopWaste.org for bay-friendly landscaping. It is consistent with the East Bay mud, service requirements, and I think a couple other things like that, but it's basically the same.
Was there a different square footage requirement?
Excuse me?
Was there a different square footage minimum requirement, or was that?
For the requirements that are in the state model ordinance, the square footage minimum is the same. Emeryville and a few other cities also have some simpler requirements for smaller landscapes. In Emeryville and in San Francisco and a couple other cities, if you have a landscape of 1,000 square feet or more, there are some simple requirements, not like the wellow, but they are basically, they're mostly based on the StopWaste.org bay-friendly, about mulch and soil amendment, and there are nine bay-friendly things.
There's small landscapes and large landscapes. Small landscapes are 1,000 to 2,500 square feet, I believe, and that's not mandated by the state. We have that in there because we wanted to, and then the state requirement kicks in at 25,000 square feet, 2,500 square feet, excuse me, which is what's called large landscapes. And then below 1,000 square feet, there's no requirements.
Questions for Charlie? Okay, well, we have two public hearings this evening, and a study session and an administrative item. The first public hearing that we have is on the art.com signs. Charlie, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson. Welcome, Commissioner Moss. Good evening. So, this is an application for an amendment to a sign permit that you approved back in August of 2011. The sign is on the 2,100 Powell Office Building, which you can see is adjacent to the freeway there. The signs are in the same location as previously approved, one facing north and one facing south, on a small balcony of sorts, just below the roof line. This is the previously approved design of the sign. As you can see, everything's lowercase. The total square footage of the sign is approximately 203 square feet. There was some question of how large the sign was minus the very small tip of the T. When we measure a sign, we draw a rectangle around its outermost parts, so the rectangle here would go along the top of the T. If that small top was removed and the box was drawn just enclosing the top of the letters in general, it goes down to about 170 square feet. So, this is the newly proposed sign design. As you can see, each sign would be 212 square feet. If you look at the original rectangle, including the top of the T, we've got a four-and-a-half percent increase. If you subtract that kind of top rectangle, it's closer to a 25% increase in square footage for each sign. So, here are the renderings of the approved on the left and the proposed on the right. This is an evening image of the building. And then here, again, is the approved sign versus the proposed sign. So, just to kind of go back and forth a little bit here. And then, again, the coloration options are the same. They can be any individual color, swirly colors, changing colors, rainbows, et cetera. The LED technology used is the same. As far as design guidelines, the sign continues to meet all of the applicable design guidelines listed here. Architectural compatibility, consistency with area character, legibility and readability, As with the previous sign, this sign is larger than 50 square feet and is therefore a major design, excuse me, major design review is required for the sign. The findings that they are, the sign is compatible with the neighborhood, readable, and integrated with architectural features can be made. We believe that the proposed conditions from the last review of this sign should remain in place. They're listed here. As far as the sign colors, these are conditions that you came up with. Only one color should be displayed at a time. It can change during each 24-hour period. There should be no mix of colors, animation, or color movement during that time, and the two signs can be different colors at the same time. As I mentioned, they face in completely different directions, so you'd never be able to see both at once. And then, in exception to this, the applicant can apply to the planning director for, I believe it's four exceptions, that are 24 hours long each, during each calendar year. So, with those conditions imposed, staff recommends approval of this amendment to the sign permit. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Four exceptions a year?
Mm-hmm.
That would allow them to change colors every 10 minutes, or why?
I believe that there is still no animation, you can see on the second line, so they could, they could have a different, a pattern or multi-color images, but it would not, there would still be no chain, rolling colors, if you understand what I'm saying. So, in other words, I think one example that was given was the waving American flag. So, an American flag pattern could be present, but not the image of the waving.
So, every other day of the year, the sign would have to be a solid color, blue, green, yellow, whatever, but four times a year, it could be like a picture of a static American flag or whatever for 24 hours. With my approval.
Is the applicant looking to do like a Google thing where it's green on St. Patrick's Day and pink?
I'm not sure what the intent is.
They want to do that, that's fine. They don't need our approval for that, as long as it's a solid color.
Given the images presented of possibilities, my understanding is that more than one color would be used.
So, for example, of those seven pictures that are shown up there, the top six, they can do without any special approval for a 24-hour period. The bottom one would require staff approval.
It couldn't move.
But it couldn't move. It would just have to look like that. Right.
Are there any further questions?
Is the condition, that condition about the exceptions, is that an addition from the previous approval resolution?
Correct. Yes.
Well, no, it was in there.
No, excuse me. Both of these conditions were added at the last Planning Commission meeting in August, when this sign was reviewed the first time.
But they are part of the approval of the previous sign.
Right.
So, these are not new conditions.
So, they were added by the commission?
By the commission, yes.
At the meeting? Okay.
Sorry.
And was that something that the applicant requested at that time?
No, I think the commission, I mean, you can all speak for yourselves.
The commission wanted to restrict what they could do, so these are basically restrictions.
I think we wanted to make sure there were some base colors, and that if they were going to do something either animated or, I guess, crazy colors, that might be brighter or taken in the wrong context, that at least staff would have some control over it?
There was concern that animated sign could be distracting for drivers on Interstate 80, so the commission felt the sign should be static.
I think we said primary colors, right?
Well, we, no. These are the exact words.
What did we say?
No, we just said solid colors.
The wording, the wording, I believe, is verbatim on your screen in front of you. That's what the condition says.
The 24 hours was about not wanting to change every 10 minutes, basically, so just calm.
And was a dimmer added as well?
I don't believe it.
It was already in there.
It was already, they added.
No, we, staff already got there.
So, there is a dimmer, okay.
Any further questions?
Why did the size get bigger?
I can't answer the question as to why they're bigger. The change in font and design, the logo, is because the company overall has changed its logo.
As the applicant here wishes to say.
Applicant is here and can answer any questions?
Good evening. Robert Beard with YESCO. Be happy to answer any questions.
Why did the sign get bigger?
In changing to the uppercase letters and the structure to stack them, and then also the puck alignment, the spacing and puck alignment, changed that layout a little bit. They're a little, you know, they're a little larger, so to accommodate that correct puck spacing.
In looking at the building, I noticed that there is, it looks like there's a support structure there now. Is that, was that, is that support structure there specifically anticipating this sign?
It was actually there for a previous sign, I believe, was Siebel on the building.
Oh, okay.
So, those signs were removed, the structures remained, so we'll be attaching to those structures.
The Siebel sign was in the front of the building, wasn't it?
Yeah, I had remembered it on the east elevation as well.
There were, there were signs on those structures previously, so it may not be Siebel exactly, but from what I was told, I believe it was Siebel, but it may not have been.
Actually, that's another question that I had, actually, is I was just curious why the, why art.com chose to locate the signs on the north and south elevations rather than, I remember Siebel as well as being on the east elevation, facing Frontage Road, and I was, I was just curious why they chose the ends of the building rather than the front of the building?
Visibility and the structure being there, and the landlord approving it on those two elevations.
We're trying to discourage signs on the, facing the hills now.
Right. We've been feeling that it is more useful to the tenants or the person that is putting up the sign to be visible from the freeways, and it's more intrusive and distracting to have lit signs facing the residential neighborhoods, so.
Would your concept work horizontally, like the initial submission? I see this being very forced in a vertical pattern. It looks like it barely fits.
Steven?
I'm too close.
Could you?
It looks like it barely fits. It's not as elegant as the original submission, which was, it read really well.
The logo change is that stacked copy, so all of their current logo styles are done in that stacked setup. So, in staying with their logo style, that was the concept on it. The letters are a little bit longer if you unstack them, and it would, it would be very, very tight to fit them into that area, unstacked.
Does this not appear tight to you? Or is it just the graphic representation that it looks really tight on the proposed rendering which we see now?
On the proposed one?
Yeah. It looks very tight. I mean, it looks like it barely fits. It doesn't float very well.
Well, we've got a few feet above it to the roof line, so to me, it fits into that space better. It doesn't look as cramped as the, as the original.
The thing that I would see, I would see a company that's name is art.com. I wouldn't see art.com. I don't think you'd even see the dot, so I think it's, it's not representative of the name of the company that well.
Well, every, I brought some examples of their logo, if you want to see those in what they do now.
It would be helpful if you could speak into the microphone as well.
Sure, I'm sorry. So, I did bring some, I did bring some examples of their current logo, if you'd like to see those.
Sure.
Yes, please.
So, those are concepts here, and then here they are in graphic format in their advertising. So, both print, online, and TV, they use that same logo concept. That's, that's why we're back here looking at this change versus the previous approved So, in all cases, that's why we went to that stacked stain and unison with their current logo.
And how you're showing it in the rendering now is basically how it is proportionally?
Yes.
I actually would disagree with that. If this is to scale, is that correct? It looks a little bit stretched, excuse me, stretched out vertically, is that true, or is that exactly the same as the art.com logo, say, here on the website? Because I went to the website, and actually, it, it doesn't have that yet, I guess, so, you know, it's just, it's in capitals, but it's across art.com all the way, instead of a stacked.
Okay.
So, I was feeling the same way as Commissioner Steinberg, where it was very forced, there was not enough space between art and com. It just looked really squished in there, so I'm wondering, is art, is this type font stretched, or is it exactly?
It's not stretched.
It's the same.
It's to proportion, yes.
Okay, well.
Any other questions for the applicant before I open the public hearing? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone wishing to speak from the public?
Thank you.
Seeing no one, let's bring it back to discuss.
I'd move for approval.
Second that.
I would make a substitute motion that if we are going to approve this sign, that it be reduced in size, because if we look at the packet that we have, there is a view from Powell Street, where if you look up at the sign from Powell Street, it appears to be higher than the, than the parapet back there. It looks like it's rising above the roof line, and I think that it is actually, the lit area is much bigger than the last sign was, and I would suggest that if we approve it, that we do it at a reduced scale, like 20% smaller, 25% smaller.
I would second that substitute motion.
It said there was a 4.5% increase in area, and I'm not sure, was that with the T or without?
That's, when you draw a box around the sign with the outside being at the top of the little letter T that's stuck out, so in the horizontal sign, the letters are five feet, and on the vertical sign, they're like seven feet, so it is a lot more lit area.
If you don't count the top of the T on the original sign, then the new sign calculates to about 25% larger.
I mean, I liked the original sign better myself, but if this is the company logo, we have, you get to use the company logo, but I think it's too big, so.
I agree with the concerns over the size. I, I think the, just looking at the I, I think the, just looking at the previously approved sign, it was framed much better in that, kind of on that surface that it's mounted to. And I think this is a, I think this logo change, to me overall, is kind of a pleasant aesthetic change, but I think just the nature of the more, kind of more square, more tall and square logo, doesn't, it doesn't lend its, that surface doesn't lend itself as nicely to that shape as, as it did to the previous shape, so I think that the, I think the reduction would, would make it framed better on that surface.
Well, critiquing the logo, I, I have to disagree. I like the old logo. It kind of stands out better as lowercase, but that's not really what we're here to do. Art.com can take care of that. This is art.com's home base, right? You can nod your head. Yeah, this is their corporate headquarters. So I just, I guess you should comment on it. Is the reduction of 20% okay with art.com? And, and do you feel, as the sign maker, you are the sign maker, that this will basically do the job that art.com is hoping it will do as its company headquarters in this Emeryville building? You can approach the microphone.
Charlie?
I'd just like to clarify this reduction in sign size. If we're talking about, say, a 20% reduction, we're talking about dimensions or area, and I would just like to suggest, let's see if, how, how the commission feels about this, if this is what you, if this is your pleasure, that you could reduce the dimensions, the horizontal and vertical dimensions, by 10%, and that would reduce the overall sign area by about 19%, because it would make, each dimension would be 90% of what it was before, which would make the sign area then 81% of what it was before, which would be a 19% reduction. So the overall height then would be reduced from about 16 and a half feet to about 14 and a half feet, and the overall width would be reduced from 13 and a half feet to a little over 12 feet. So I, I mean.
And what's the square footage on that?
I don't know. I'd have to figure it out.
Haven't done the math.
But, oh, I guess it would be 212.2 times .81, whatever that is.
Could the applicant still, if you might?
Would you like to comment?
Comment on the reduction of size in, at all?
We, we reviewed multiple sizes, and
71.
The, the feeling by art.com is this gives them the better look, the better visibility on the building, and it being their main building, their main office facility. We went through a number of size changes to get to this size for that building, so their desire would be for it to be at this size.
So how would?
Well, just to further that, do you have, I, I guess, it's not really authority, we're going to vote on whatever we're going to vote on, and you're going to walk away. Is it your opinion that art.com will not like this decision and go to the council to, because this, what they need is this square footage? I, I really just want to know, without the art.com here, I think they were here at the first.
They are.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Well, maybe they can comment. Yes, please.
Are you just asking whether you're going to vote?
Before, before that, I kind of, more of a technical question.
I'm asking if they're okay with the reduction.
Okay.
If they're okay with the reduction, I'm, I'm, I think it's fine the way it's proposed. I, I'd like to know how they feel, how art.com feels.
Since you're basically working with an array of, of dots to create the sign, is, is it, do you think it's doable to make that reduction?
It, it's doable. The challenge in it becomes the array of the puck and the spacing, and, and that's where we got to this size, because of the, the spacing dimension from center of puck to center of puck, and the vertical and the horizontal lines to accomplish that size with the size puck, with the spacing desired, to keep pixelization at a minimum and everything else, that's the size we came up with that gave us the best grid of puck alignment.
So a 10% reduction in height, as Charlie suggested, wouldn't necessarily work out with these three-inch spacing that you have in the puck.
Correct. And I couldn't, I, I, I can't tell you exactly, because I have to relay it out to see how the puck alignment works with those changes.
So it's your opinion it wouldn't look like the logo? It would look thinner? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Depending on how that puck alignment comes out, correct.
Okay.
And are the pucks only available in that particular dimension?
Yes, ma'am. They are a two and three-quarter inch puck.
Space three inches apart.
Correct.
Did the art.com wish to speak?
Thank you. I'm Terry Hill, Vice President of Human Resources, and I've been working on this project for our company. And I think Robert just highlighted the concerns we would have with any dimension changes. Other than that, we're looking for the maximum impact that we can have. We think it fits really well in the parapet space, and it doesn't conflict with the, the rooftop or give that perception. We've, we love it, and so, you know, we, it would be a great disappointment if it had to become smaller. And we are going through a branding change right now, so the logo, that's why you're not seeing all over our website. It'll roll out soon after this sign would go up.
Any other questions for the representative of art.com?
No, thank you.
Okay, sure.
I would like to maintain my substitute motion, but with the dimensions that Charlie discussed, and because it does concern me that, from the close-up views, that the sign appears to be rising above the rooftop there, and that, we've been working on a general plan and zoning update for a number of years now, and the consultants put together extensive draft sign regulations that the zoning committee reviewed and, and seemed to be comfortable with probably two years ago now, well, March 2010. And in that document, which is not an approved document, it's, it's just a draft document, the proposal was that buildings over 75 feet tall shouldn't have a sign that's bigger than 100 square feet. So even at a reduction, we're talking about 170% of, or 180% of what that would be.
Yeah.
So that's, again, it's not an approved document, but it looks like the direction that people were interested in moving in town, so.
By my calculation, the current sign as proposed, or the current proposal is about 15.7 feet tall and about 13.5 feet wide. If you reduce both of those dimensions by 10%, then the height would be 14.1 feet, and the width would be about 12.1 feet. So the current area is about 212 feet, and the new area would be about 171 square feet. So that's about an 81% of, of the proposed, so a 19% reduction.
So do you have any suggestions on how we could make this a little less restrictive? So if, if we wanted to reduce it, and that was our target, but yet the dots, the way we're working with, you know, fixed dimension on the dots to create the pattern, I, I guess I'd, I'd support the, the smaller sign. I think you made a good point there. But I just wonder if it's, how doable it is, given the grid pattern that you've, you've got, the array?
Well, rather than specify exact dimensions, you could say, the applicant shall redesign the sign to be no more than, I don't know, 85% of its current area or something like that, and let them figure it out.
Alternately, you could use the square footage of the previously approved sign.
That's true.
So the way that, I mean, the way that we measure signs is to draw a rectangle around the entire lettering, which was 207 square feet. So that's very slightly smaller. You could also use the smaller measurement, not including the, the top of the T, 170 square feet. That's quite a bit smaller, but.
That would be about what you'd get with a 10% reduction in each direction.
In order to use the previously approved square footage, would that, I mean, would that require a new approval of this, or could this be denied, and then that previous square footage would stand in the old resolution with the?
We could simply add a condition of approval, limiting the maximum square footage approved, and then let them work out the dimensions or the lighting arrangement.
I would note that if you look at the proposed sign drawing that showed the little circles inside the letters that give you the size of the little, whatever they're called, pods or?
Pucks.
Pucks, yeah, the little pucks. If you look at the previous sign, the letters were much more curvy and fluid. They weren't nearly as square and regular as the proposed signage, and the pucks are just kind of squished in and however they happen to fit. You know, they're not, they don't appear to be in quite as regular a pattern as they are in the proposed new signage. So I'm just, that just tells me that it seems like it might be possible to fit the pucks into a reduced sign by making the pattern of them not quite so regular.
Good point. Well, I'm certainly opening, open to, I, I would have voted on the motion to approve the sign, but I certainly understand the substitute motion of keeping within the general plan yet to be adopted, but I think there's a certain square footage that's been approved, and maybe if we keep it within that as a maximum and let them work it out with the pucks, so I'm going to make a, can I make a third substitute motion? Want to make a third substitute motion?
You can make a substitute substitute motion. We just take them in the order that they're in the reverse order.
When I became a planning commission, I think there were five substitute motions before I came in. So I'll make another substitute motion to approve as submitted, except that the maximum square footage would be what was previously approved.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes, you can.
Are you speaking about the, what is it, Arlie, 202?
212.2.
That's the current, that's.
That's what this one is.
That's this one.
This one is 212.
Oh, the previous, it's 207, I believe, or 202.
202.
202, excuse me.
So are we talking about the 202 that includes the rectangle to the top of the T? Or are we talking about the not including the top of the T?
Well, we didn't consider the top of the T that evening, if I recall. We approved, thank you, Arlie, what was?
202 square feet. So that's a, that's a very slight reduction in the size of this sign.
Overall.
I thought we were talking more about the 170 square feet here.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Yeah, it was my intention to go in that direction of the, the actual lit area that we had approved before, and your, your motion is for less of a reduction.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay, is there a second for Commissioner Flores's substitute substitute motion?
No.
Well, then it looks like we will vote on the substitute motion, and I will, yeah, if Charlie, if you could re-read what you had said, because that makes sense in terms of getting to where we were.
So this is a motion to approve the sign as submitted, except that the dimensions would be reduced both vertically and horizontally by 90%. I mean, to, by 10% to 90% of what they are.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
It was already seconded.
Oh.
Oh, wait, yes, Commissioner Steinberg seconded it. So what we have on the floor is a motion to approve as submitted, moved by Commissioner Cardoza and seconded by Commissioner Sherman, and then we have a substitute motion by Commissioner, by Chair Donaldson and seconded by Commissioner Steinberg to approve as submitted, but by, but with a reduction in the vertical and horizontal dimensions of 10%. And we'll vote on the substitute motion first, which is for a smaller sign. You ready to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
No.
And Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no. The application is approved as modified. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Thank you. I think that the sign will read really well. It's going to be quite large, and it'll be visible from both directions on the freeway and from the bridge as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another public hearing, Sustainable Transportation Plan.
It's a two plan, a two transportation plan night. Wow, that was interesting. That's surprising, that's surprising. Uh, shoot. I told her she didn't need it.
So this is the continuation of the hearing on the Emeryville Sustainable Transportation Plan, and it's mostly been a discussion in the last few weeks about transit. Since the September meeting, staff has talked with the Planning Commission Committee, the Emeryville Transportation Management Association, ETMA, which runs the Emery Go Round, the Emery Unified School District, AC Transit, BART, and the Emeryville Commission on Aging. Whoops, wrong way. Over here. And one thing that's new in it is an analysis of transit service using Commissioner Sherman's idea, setting some criteria and then seeing if current service meets them. Do we have a connection from residential concentrations to BART, downtown Berkeley, downtown Oakland, and San Francisco? Are the trip times less than or equal to 15 minutes to BART and 20 minutes to downtown? Are the, all three downtowns? Are the peak period frequencies less than 15 minutes to BART and 20 minutes to downtowns? And off-peak, 20 minutes to BART and 30 minutes to downtown? So as a result of our analysis, we see that there is no Watergate connection to downtown Oakland directly, or to downtown Berkeley, that the frequencies from 64th Street to downtown Berkeley are a little bit on the high side, and that trip times from Christie to BART and Christie to downtown Berkeley and Christie to downtown Oakland are a little on the high side, although Nathan Landau with AC Transit says that from there to downtown Berkeley is more like 26 minutes than 29. It's, it's still a little more than our criteria. So from all those discussions, we've made several changes to the strategies, some for Emery Go Round. There was a strategy to extend service into the night. This is a little more specific. Midnight is how long BART runs, so it would match BART if it were extended to midnight. Another one is to have signs on all sides of the buses, so you can see from the back or the side what route it is. And to add, this is, this was an exciting moment when Emery Go Round staffer Peter Oswald was in a meeting with us and the school board person, and he said, "Well, we've been thinking, in the long run, if we can get the funding, we'd like to have a fourth route that goes on 40th and San Pablo and Shellmount to serve Watergate." And even though people on.
Powell.
Powell. I did it again. Powell, Powell. And so it would serve the people on San Pablo Avenue, the Center for Community Life, and the Triangle residents, even though there aren't enough of them to really pay and support service to them on its own. It would just tangentially do that. And if it had a loop at Christie and Shellmount, it would provide service to that area and a place for the bus to stop, since it's hard for it to stop on Powell. And we'll have more about this in a minute. Another strategy is to optimize routes. Another Commissioner Sherman's ideas is that if the routes are closer than a quarter of a mile apart, the bus is spending too much time stopping. The people can walk that far, and, and we don't need that many stops. So if you look at this map, you can sort of see a few places where the stops are closer together than, substantially closer together than a quarter mile. So these might be places where we would suggest that the Emery Go Round consider eliminating stops, especially if they don't have many riders, which is sometimes the case. Another strategy change is, we have a strategy in there to restore the AC Transit 57 route to, right now, it goes, the 57 route comes down to San Pablo and stops. It used to go on 40th and Shellmount. The reason AC Transit cut that when they had to make their cuts was because there is both other AC Transit routes and Emery Go Round routes that go from that. both other AC Transit routes and Emery Go Round routes that go from that corner on 40th and Shellmount. The problem is just that people have to transfer. So the Planning Commission Committee was saying, "We might have other priorities. If AC Transit gets money, we might want to do something else instead of duplicating those services." Another strategy is to move the carpool area in front of Christie Commons to the bus stop that it's, used to be associated with. That bus stop got moved to the north, and the carpool pickup area, which the city so nicely set up, has not moved with it. And there are 12 parking spots right next to there. When I was there, about 8:40 one morning, there were all five cars parked there. So we're suggesting that the carpool pickup be moved up there where those parking spaces are, and have the parking spaces down at Christie Commons. Would still leave some parking in front of Avenue 64. Another strategy is the idea of moving the AC Transit F route from 40th and Market to Powell Street. And we started thinking about what this would do in terms of who it serves and so forth. Right now, the properties in residential buildings in red and the ones in sort of greenish gold are currently ser, are within a half a mile of the existing F route. If we change the route, the ones in red will no longer be within a half a mile, and the ones in green will be newly within a half a mile. They'll get served where they weren't before. And the really light green ones, which are supposed to be yellow, are not now within a half a mile, would not in the future. So one possibility is maybe consolidating stops on 40th and Market might reduce the trip times without moving the route. Something to think about. Other changes are, we could ask Amtrak to think about one-stop fares. So if you just wanted to go from Emeryville to University of Berkeley or to Jack London Square, you could get a discount and help introduce you to Amtrak. Another possibility is to ask them if they would, could have an arrival display at the public market. And another new strategy is service for senior and disabled residents, expanding the Eight to Go van and the Go Van Go, which is a group van. And another idea is to match volunteer drivers to passengers who need assistance through the door, like for doctor appointments and things like that. So we would like to have that in the plan as something that the city would like to see. And we did get some comments from Joyce Jacobson. She is on the Commission on Aging and was thanking me for the Eight to Go strategy. And she said, "But we really need to keep Watergate having access to the stores on Shellmount Street and 40th and the City Hall." So staff's response to that is that if the new route has a Christie-Shellmount loop, it will connect Watergate to Bay Street, Powell Street Plaza, and almost to the public market. It would connect to the east end of the 40th Street Shopping Center, East Bay Bridge, and it would connect to the Hollis Route, which stops at 45th Street, a block from City Hall, and three blocks from East Bay Bridge. In return for this, we would, if we, if, it doesn't have to happen if we add that route, but if we choose to take the Watergate loop out of the Shellmount route and serve the Watergate people this way instead, then the trip time on the Shellmount route from the 64th-Christie area would be shorter, especially to BART. And then Commissioner Sherman had some ideas for if the, if we move the F route, that we should have a loop to Watergate and a loop to the 64th-Christie area, which makes a lot of sense, except I don't know if AC Transit would want to do that for a regional transbay service. And here's where Commissioner Sherman would like to see the stops. They're about a quarter mile apart. Watergate, Pacific Park Plaza, the Amtrak Bridge, and Hollis-Powell. So, and I just mentioned this, that consolidating the stops in the existing route might shorten the trip time without having to move the route. So, policy questions for you tonight. If the Emery Go Round adds the San Pablo-Powell route, which this is a distant future, have to get funds first thing, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. If that happens, would we want to shift the Watergate shopping link from the Shellmount route to the new route? And the second question is, do we want to move the Christie carpool area to the bus stop? And the third one is, should we consolidate some Emery Go Round stops? Should we eliminate, suggest that Emery Go Round eliminates some stops where they're close together and one doesn't have many riders? There are a few like that. And should we delete our strategy to restore AC Transit 57 west of San Pablo, because we might have some other priorities of what we'd rather have AC Transit do, such as maybe increasing frequencies, restoring frequencies to before they had to make those cuts, or extending service into the night a little farther, although most of their routes do go to midnight? And the other question is, should we move, should we suggest that AC Transit move the F bus from 40th to Powell, which AC Transit wouldn't mind doing because it's shorter for them? Or should we consolidate the stops on 40th and Market to reduce trip time and still serve the people on 40th? So, interesting questions for you to consider. And that concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions from you.
Do we have a sense of the numbers of people that would be served on 40th? I mean, I know that you had the map with the buildings, but are we, do we have a sense of the people that would be served, whether the F bus is on 40th or on Powell? Just the density of the residences there?
I don't think I still do. I think I looked at what I had done and said, "I'm not sure about that," and haven't redone it.
Can we go back to that slide with that map with the colored parcels?
Mm-hmm. Let's see. Nine.
So I just want to make sure I understand the slide. So the, 'cause I think there's some overlap between the two colors, 'cause I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the orange, which has, you know, on the kind of west side of town near the Powell interchange, those, some of those orange parcels are existing within a half a mile of the stops on Christie and Shellmount there. So I'm-
So yes, well, let me just go over the colors again.
Okay.
In the office, the green was yellow, so it was easier. The, the red is, of course, the people that now have service and, and would not be within a half a mile of the route if it got moved. All these orange, gold, whatever they are, in the middle, 53rd, Dorado Lejo, 59th, Christie, 64th, they are currently within a half a mile of the existing service. They're not necessarily convenient to it, they're not really close, but they are within a half a mile. Does that answer your question?
Oh, okay, no, I, I think, I think I understand it. So the, the green is, is, the green is people that would gain access to the service with the change.
The green, green-
And the red is people that would lose access to the service with the change.
The green, green is like part of Watergate and 65th Ocean, that area. They would gain service by having it moved north. They would then become within a half a mile.
Okay. The orange is static.
Have service within a half a mile, but it's not as close as they might like.
And the yellow will never have access?
Right, not, right.
Either proposal. Right, okay.
May I, may I point something out about this? The reason that AC Transit won't move the F line to Powell Street right now is that there's no place to stop. I mean, if, if you think about Powell Street between, say, Hollis and the freeway, from Hollis to Christie there on the bridge, the Powell Street Bridge, obviously not gonna stop there. And then between Christie and the freeway, that's that, you know, huge wide street with all the fast-turning cars and there's, and all the driveways on the north side, there's no place to put a bus stop on that section either. What this proposes is that they would stop coming west, coming eastbound from San Francisco, they would just stop at the bottom of the off-ramp, at the Powell Street off-ramp, behind, what is it, Marshalls, I guess? And then going the other direction, they would stop on Frontage Road just before swinging onto the freeway. We could do that now, but it would require, you know, a little bit of public improvement and obviously, obviously the approval of Caltrans. But if the, if the bus were to be, but, but currently, they also can stop at Trader Joe's on Christie, and then going the other direction on Shellmount, they can stop in front of Site B. So that's, that's where they stop currently in the bayfront area. And that's why they don't want to move to Powell Street, because if they move to Powell Street, they have no place to stop unless we put, create those new stops.
If we have a stop, oh, keep going.
Well, one other thing, the east and westbound, if, if we move it to Powell Street, we'd have the stops basically at the freeway ramps. And then east of Hollis, again, there's really no place to stop, because there's no pullouts and those, there's no parking and the curbs are red. But we're proposing on this map a stop somewhere around the vicinity of Hollis Street. Most likely, it would be just in a travel lane. The bus would stop in the travel lane, the cars would just have to wait until the bus filled up. Usually, the dwell time at a bus stop is only about 20 seconds or so, so shouldn't be a problem.
So that would be on the east side of Hollis, on Powell is the only place-
I guess the way it appears to be shown here is on, going eastbound, it would be east of Hollis, and going westbound, it would be west of Hollis, right by the gas station?
But this is a map that I made in my office.
Okay.
This is not a map. The DC Transit has gone out and we've gone out and figured out where we could do this. It's where we think it, there should be a stop, and I did look closely at how we could put some stops on Powell, and it's not easy. You either have to let people stop, let the bus stop in the travel lane, which works on Christie, 'cause there's no traffic, but for the, our arterial to the highway on Powell might raise a few more eyebrows to do that. Or we'd have to buy private property and put pullouts, which is harder for the bus to get back into traffic, and there are things built there. I'm not sure if it's doable.
I would also note that this is the reason why we're suggesting that if the Emery Go Round has a San Pablo and Powell Street route, that it include a loop on Christie and Shellmount. This isn't something we discussed with the TMA, because frankly, I don't think they had thought about this. But if they don't include that loop, then there's no place for the Emery Go Round to stop between Hollis and Frontage Road. So it's sort of like, what's the point of having the Emery Go Round go through here east and west if it can't stop anywhere? So that's why we included that loop, that suggestion.
And we do have Nathan Landau here from AC Transit.
Yes.
Nathan Landau, AC Transit. Hello to people I've seen before. Hello to people I haven't seen before. The only comment, I want to copy this map, this is really interesting. The, the only comment I would make is just that the people living along 40th Street, if the F were rerouted onto Powell, the people living on 40th Street, you know, assuming no other changes, would still have peak hour service on Line C. That wouldn't be true on Market, 'cause it continues east on, on 40th, but the, on, yeah, on 40th, but there would be a peak hour transbay, west in the morning, east in the afternoon, service to 40th. There wouldn't be the all-day service.
Nathan, I know that you did substantial work on the designing with transit. Do you have thoughts on stops on Powell Street?
I've been, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm a planner. I've, I've been out with the city's traffic engineer and our traffic engineer. It's very difficult. I mean, I don't have an answer. I mean, I think Charlie described it well. We're willing, in, in appropriate circumstances, to stop in travel lanes. We, we, we don't have a problem with that. In a way, it's good for, from a bus operations point of view, because it means the bus doesn't have to pull in and out. But Powell is very high volume, and it's, it's both high volume and at times, it's pretty high speed, so. I mean, I believe there's a, there's a way to solve it, but I don't know, you know, what you would have to build in order to solve it. And it, it's true that it doesn't, it, it doesn't make sense to move the F unless you can have a good stop somewhere between Christie and, and the freeway. So, I mean, there was a longer-term discussion about creating an island stop, which I think is kind of interesting and is like what's, what exists on Market Street in San Francisco, if people can visualize it, where, where the bus is stopping sort of in the middle of the road. That's obviously a bigger, longer-term project. I don't know how long that would take to happen. But in the short term, yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult. I mean, if the city really wanted to do it, you know, we, we would look at it again, because it is a shorter, going straight across Powell Street is a shorter route for us. So that's a change that we can make with no new money, which is unusual. You know, but, so that's, that's kind of all I know about it.
Chair Donaldson, just if I could elaborate a bit. I think the challenge between Christie and the freeway on Powell is not only that the bus would have to stop in a travel lane, but those are also turn lanes. Going eastbound, you have a double left, double right turn lane onto Christie, and the bus would have to pull over into that turn lane to stop, and then it would have to pull across two right turn lanes to get back into the straight-ahead lane. And similarly, going westbound, you're in a turn lane onto the freeway ramp, and you have to pull across that, plus there's a whole lot of driveways on the north side. East of Hollis, you also don't have a good place for the bus to pull over, but there's a lot less traffic east of Hollis than there is west of Hollis. So I think stopping in a travel lane on Powell Street east of Hollis wouldn't be as problematic as it would be over by the freeway. Oh, and the, the plan that Nathan mentioned for having it stop in the middle of the street, as you may recall, that's part of the Powell Street Urban Design Plan, Phase 3, which maybe some of us will live to see implemented. And that has been approved by the City Council. That, that plan has been approved by the City Council, so I guess you could say it's official city policy, but I don't think it's gonna happen anytime soon.
Doesn't it also include an earlier phase with stops at the off-ramp?
Yes, it does. That's actually in Phase 1.
Nathan and Diana, the F, you can shake your head, the F line runs 24 hours a day and, no?
No, it runs, oh, it runs roughly 6:00 AM to midnight. Runs seven days a week. I mean, it's one of, there's only three transbay bus lines that run seven days a week, and that's one of them.
And this one loops around Berkeley Campus?
Yes.
And comes back?
Right. It, it, it loops around, goes through downtown Berkeley, loops around the Berkeley campus, and then, and then comes back. Can I say one sort of slightly related thing? I just, I can't, I can't resist that, that there's nothing new in the world in a way. The, the proposal for an Emery Go Round route on, on Powell and San Pablo is very much like an amputated leg of the 57 a long time ago, when, when the city asked us to reroute via 40th and Shellmount. That was a seven or eight years ago. So that would kind of, if, if Emery Go Round were able to do that, it would restore that connection across Powell that I think people may have, may have missed.
So Chair Donaldson, would this be a good time for me to kind of explain what I'm trying to accomplish here, or?
I think maybe we should open it for public comment, just to see if there's anyone else from the public that wants to comment on the Sustainable Transportation Plan. Is there anyone there? No? Okay, this is a good time for you to-
So you're closing the public hearing?
I'm closing the public hearing.
So actually, if you can leave that, that up there, maybe, maybe you might want to go back to the map that I made. So basically, the, the fundamental thing that I'm trying to accomplish here is really, what is it that we're trying to connect to? And I think that's kind of what falls apart in our existing transit system, is that we don't really, we haven't really defined what it is we want to connect. And I think what we keep, things that we want to connect are downtown Berkeley, San Francisco, we want to be able to get people to downtown Oakland, and we want, definitely want to connect to our major transit centers, being the Amtrak Station in Emeryville and the MacArthur-BART Station, especially the MacArthur Station. Now, the Emery Go Round does a fantastic job of really connecting to, to the BART Station. That's kind of what it lives for. So when I kind of look at the whole transit picture and look at what's really missing here, is we're missing the connection, a really good connection to San Francisco. And I, and again, another thing is, is really the concept of let- And I, and again, another thing is, is really, um, the concept of let's put our transportation where our highest density is, both residential density and our office density. And we've, we've got a bus, the, the F bus is really a fantastic bus. It's just, it's so close but yet so far, almost figuratively and, and real, literally, um, that I think with, with some minor changes to the route, we could make it much more effective. So today, I went to a conference, a sustainable mobility conference in downtown Berkeley at the Brower Center, and I took the F bus there. Um, what I found, things I discovered was the AC Transit website is fantastic. I got great information. I was able to find out when I should walk to the stop. I walked there, within two minutes, I had a bus. But my overall time from door to door was 40 minutes. And that's from, you know, the highest density area of Emeryville to downtown Berkeley. I think we've got to do better than that, and I think we can do better than that. And that's ultimately what I'm looking for, is to do better than that. And just, just an observation of what I saw on the F bus is it really picks up most of its passengers kind of on this map where the green and the red intersect, right in that area, it starts picking up more there. It does pick up some along Fortieth, but it seems like the closer it gets to downtown Berkeley, the more passengers that it picked up. So I'm not sure that it's going to lose that many passengers in where the, the red is shown on this map. There's also, we have to look at, um, eliminating redundancy. We've got an Emery Go-Round that basically goes along Fortieth and connects to, to the Bart Station. So really, if people, and if the F bus is a Transbay bus, there are people in this area that it's very easy for them to get to the Bart Station and take Bart into the city. Um, so if we've got this Transbay bus, I think that the, probably the area in the, the bay area that the Transbay buses needed the most is actually in Emeryville. Um, whereas other places, you know, we should have feeder buses that go to the Bart Stations that get people into the city. So what I'm trying to do here is really, um, hit the highest density areas and shorten the travel times so that there's something that people will take this bus. I probably wouldn't take this bus again. Um, I wanted to make it work and what I found is, the conference got out at 5:15, I was in a rush to get home. It's like, I'm not going to chance the AC, AC Transit bus. And that's kind of what my thinking was, whereas I know if I, um, go over to the Bart Station and take the Emery Go-Round, I know I'm going to get home on time. And that's what I did and basically the travel time was the same. So I think there's great opportunities to shorten that travel time by rerouting this bus. And I do understand that stopping the, the F bus on Powell is problematic, and that's part of the reason that I added the loops onto Christie. Now surprisingly, um, if you look at the map that I put together, the route is still reduced a half mile shorter than what the route is in red. So we're actually shortening that route, but at the same time, we're picking up the highest density, residential density area in Emeryville being at, so we've got Avenue 64, we've got Pacific Park Plaza, we've got the, uh, the Bridgewater, um, condos, and there's, uh, Archstone is there, and then Marketplace is going to be building more housing there. So what I'm, again, another thing that I'm trying to do is create a transit node in front of Avenue 64, if we relocate the casual carpool there. It centers, it concentrates where people are going to walk to and create a neighborhood center for transit. Um, the other part of my loop is basically to go out to the, the towers. So we've got high, high-density office space out there. What's happening now is you've got people that are going from the office towers, taking the Express Emery Go-Round over to the Bart Station, taking it east to hop on the Bart Train to go over into San Francisco. So why don't we streamline this whole process by using a really good bus that's there? Just, just tweak it a little bit so it works a little bit better. Another advantage to that, that little loop going out to the towers, is the return trip, getting on the on-ramp, instead of going around the, the horseshoe on-ramp like it currently does, you could take the, um, the very little-used on-ramp, that's really, um, like a clear shot until the traffic builds. Um, and this is something that I've experienced where, when I first discovered the, the F bus, um, I was excited about it because it worked for me. I took it to San Francisco and it's like, wow, this is great. This was after they made the, the route change. Um, so I told somebody else about it and the following weekend, we got on the thing and said, I'm all excited about this, let me show you how it works. And we got on it and it's stuck in traffic, like as soon as it got on the on-ramp. So, and, and basically the response was, from that other person, I'm never going to take this thing again. And, and we can't let that happen. So by eliminating that, getting caught in traffic and utilizing that really seldom-used on-ramp that bypasses a lot of the traffic, I think we can optimize our speed. So I think there's a lot of things that, by going with the route that I've shown here, we pick up the density and we shorten the, the length of the time, and I think we can also shorten the trip time, um, and make it so we can get from PPP to downtown Berkeley in 20 minutes, get from PPP to San Francisco in 20 minutes. If we do that, then I think that the EZ Pass program is a really viable option for all the housing in our area. Right now, EZ Pass is a great program, but if we don't have AC Transit buses to use it, it doesn't do much, do us much good. So that's kind of my rationale behind this.
Can I ask a question about, uh, I'm, just, it's kind of a question for John and maybe for Nathan as well. Isn't the fare on the, on the F to go to downtown Berkeley, isn't it considerably more than the fare on a local?
No, it is, it's a local fare and I found that out.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and actually, I asked the, the driver this morning and, because I had my, my, um, TransLink, um, or whatever it is.
Clipper card.
Yeah, Clipper card. Um, I, I flashed that and I said, do I need to do something special to get the local fare? And it's like, no, you don't. You just use it and it's going in this direction from here.
But, you know, I've seen your rate, but it's still cheaper to go on Bart than it is on, uh, AC Transit.
It may be.
Well, it's cheaper by, uh, a quarter. Yeah, or, or actually 35 cents, yeah. Somehow this piece of misinformation got into the world and I know that, that we're charging TransBay fares on the local portions of TransBay routes and I don't know how, we just need to keep telling people that's not true.
All the TransBay buses were the same fare?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a zone fare in effect, once you, once you go over the bridge.
I, I think AC Transit could do a better job of, of stating that on the buses because...
Yeah, probably.
Because all your literature basically says the F is a TransBay bus, TransBay bus fares are $4.
Yeah, the, the, the problem, I mean, it's not, I, I think we could. Uh, there are a lot of TransBay buses that don't accept local passengers. And so it's only certain routes like the F where people can, can ride them locally. So, but I, yeah, I, I think this is a confusion we need to work on.
That's good information for our local residents to know that. Um, let me just ask, Diana had a list of policy questions that she wanted us to address before making a recommendation one way or another. Let me ask if there are any more comments on items other than what Diana had on her list? Any other concerns about this plan?
I, I have some comments because I wasn't here. These are probably comments that would have been more appropriate at the study session, but since I wasn't here at the study session, um, I'll just give you them now and the majority of the commission can decide what to do with them. Um, so they're mostly about actually the goals of the plan. Um, as I was looking through the goals of the plan, I noticed there was, there are a lot of goals that deal indirectly with, with sustainability and with environmental concerns. Um, but there wasn't a goal, I didn't see a goal that I thought directly, um, kind of set a, a goal for sustainability or, or, um, and in thinking, as I kind of thought more and more about this, I, I wasn't actually sure how I would word such a goal, but I just wanted to kind of make the point that, um, I didn't see anything that was, that, you know, that said, uh, a goal of this plan is, you know, a sustainable transportation system or is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions or is, you know, that, that nature of thing. Um, as I kind of thought more and more about it, though, I was also thinking about, there, there, um, there are a couple of goals that, uh, that mention efficiency, um, which I think is really key, and I think actually that there should be, um, I think one of the goals, I think there should be a goal that is efficient transportation. Um, and I, I thought that, um, maybe an appropriate, uh, wording of that would be, um, a transportation system which maximizes time, space, and energy efficiency. Um, because I think all, all of those components, um, of efficiency are important. You want to be able to move the most amount of people, um, in the least amount of space with the mo- least amount of energy. Um, and then also, the other thing that I, that I noticed was missing, um, was a health component. Um, because I, I think a lot of these forms of transportation, um, like walking and biking particularly, um, do tend to promote public health. And so I just thought that that might be, um, something that we might be interested in is actually having a goal of the plan is to, to promote public health through those modes of transportation. Um, and this is kind of a piddly little comment, but I think it's important, is that the, the photo on the, the bottom photo on the, the page of the goals, um, was fairly low resolution and I, I just don't think it looked very good in the plan. Um, but those, those are kind of my comments, um, that I, you know, like I said, if I had been on the commission, when this, when you, the study session was done, I would have, I would have given those then. Um, and then I have, um, I'll just add a couple, um, well, no, I have some more comments, but they relate to these items, so I'll just stop there.
Yeah, I, I just, I do want to point out that the goals that are listed here pertain to our general plan transportation goals and that we have then strategies that this plan lays out to try to meet those goals. And it does actually mention some of the factors that you had talked about.
Oh, you are correct.
Yeah. Anyway, how about if we go through the policy questions one at a time so that we can, uh, come to some closure on some of them? If ET, if the Emeryville Transit Management, um, Authority adds San Pablo-Powell route, shift Watergate Shopping Link from Shellmount to a new route? Um, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see, I would love to see the new route and, and then eliminate the Shellmount route going out to Watergate because that adds a lot of time, um, from, again, the PPP area, getting from PPP to Bart. It's just this extra very long loop and I think it adds like five minutes to the, to the travel time. Um, so if we could eliminate that, and I think the condition would be, um, we would have to have this new, new route, and if we added the new route, then we should eliminate the, uh, the loop that goes out to, to Watergate.
Well, I live in Watergate and, um, I don't like this as well as the existing route because, uh, it doesn't serve Bay Street and, uh, stopping along Powell, I guess that's why you're looping on Christie and going under and then looping back to go across Powell Street and Bridge, um, doesn't give too many stops in that area and just adds more time to it. And then, uh, a lot of it goes through Oakland. Um, it probably does serve the Triangle better than anything we have now. Uh, but, uh, you know, for somebody that uses, uh, Emery Go-Round and Bart at least once a week, uh, I think the, the old ways were better. And I certainly hope it wouldn't give up the, uh, Emery, Emery, uh, Watergate Express. Uh, it does, we do have the 20% of the residents of Watergate living in, in the Watergate condominiums and the highest con- certainly the highest concentration of office space in the Watergate Towers. And, uh, the Watergate Express serves those very nicely now. This doesn't affect the Watergate Express, does it?
Peter Oswald said this in the meeting, he called it a fourth route.
I see.
So that means not taking away any of the other routes.
Living in the Triangle, uh, for 10 years, I can say I am not served by the Emery Go-Round, uh, except for the moment when it was stopping at Fortieth Street, which was still a, a little inconvenient and, uh, having it run down San Pablo would certainly work for me and my community. I know having a route that, that does this, we, we wanted it to come down Adeline, or I should say, some people wanted it to come down Adeline, but this is a, uh, at least something. But I do agree with, um, the percentages that Buzz just said and I, I know that, you know, having 20% of the city basically lives out in the peninsula, so, and there is a lot of office there as Art.com is showing, so. Um, but I am, you know, I'm for a, a fourth route and knocking out the shoppers with it.
Other thoughts?
I, I'd have to say it is, uh, extremely efficient and it's getting one from the core area of the Powell interchange to Bart, so it's, uh, and running down San Pablo would serve a great number of people, both in Emeryville and Oakland.
Well, presumably it wouldn't stop in Oakland, right?
Well, there's folks that would walk over from residences, I'm sure, which would be great.
Because I've always, I always wanted the Emery Go-Round to stop on Fortieth, like, you know, at the coffee shop before I got, but it was Oakland and it just doesn't stop. Once it goes in Oakland, it doesn't stop.
Well, considering that the Oakland, uh, Golden Gate Branch Library functions as the Emeryville City Library, uh, it might not be unreasonable for it to at least stop there.
Yeah.
How did it get extended to the Berkeley Bowl? Did Berkeley Bowl contribute to the cost?
Peter Oswald waved his magic wand. That's my understanding.
Well, it sounds like that, um, since, do you want to go back to the original questions that we're addressing so that we know what we're? So the questions are... Okay. Um, I would, I think if the ETMA has discussed this as a fourth route and has discussed this in conjunction with the existing routes, that it makes sense to me to keep the ones that are there and to continue, and to add this as an additional thing because I do think that it will serve an area of Emeryville that's not getting served well now, and I don't think it makes sense to make it more difficult for the Watergate people to get around in order to serve that group. So if there's a possibility of doing four routes, that sounds, sounds good to me.
Now, this service is paid for, isn't it, by an assessment district of commercial properties?
Yes, the Emery Go-Round is paid for by a business improvement district. Um, the ETMA can do other things, but they have to keep their funds separate if they do, like they are also managing Berkeley's shuttle now, the West Berkeley Shuttle. Um, if they had other funds, they could do other things. Uh, because this would serve Powell Street and not just San Pablo Avenue, um, they, the business that does serve would pay for the route. Uh, there are a few businesses on San Pablo Avenue, but not really enough to pay for service up to there, unless there's something else that that route does.
Well, in the background, reporter, and one of the pieces of information that we got, I thought that the ETMA had said that they were willing to create stops in that area rather than just cruising through and waving at people.
Right, yes, yes.
Uh, one point that maybe hasn't been emphasized also is that this route would serve the Center for Community Life. And one of the big challenges with the Center for Community Life is parking. They, they're not going to have enough and it's a real strong goal to try to get more people to use public transportation, particularly, uh, Bart. And that's real hard for them now because they don't have a very good connection to Bart and the nearest Emery Go-Round stop is more than a half mile away, I think. So this, this... So this, this new line would have a stop right in front of the Center for Community Life campus. In fact, the latest design plans I've seen have a transit plaza in one of the corners of the campus, specifically for the Emery Go Round stop. It would also serve the Esque la Bilingue, which is right across the street.
That seems like a great idea, to add a route and not remove.
So do we have sort of consensus about adding a route to the?
So what I'm hearing is, don't take the Shellmount, don't take the Powell Street loop off the existing Shellmount route, but just add this route to the existing routes.
So I still have a little trouble with that, because that, it, it basically, it's, it's just such a long route from the high concentration, again, of residential to get to the BART station. It's a long trip to get between here and there. And I, and the whole thing is a balancing act, and, and maybe, maybe the solution is that we don't need to have a solution tonight, that we can, you know, evaluate this thing and look at, at all the different factors in it. But, again, what I'm trying to do is, is make transportation usable. And to be usable, we have to reduce these trip times.
I think that one of the things that's in these recommendations is ongoing monitoring of the transit systems, and seeing where the ridership is, and making adjustments as it makes sense, because we're going through different development phases here. Population is going to shift, and I think that as long as that's one of our things that we're cognizant of, that we're going to make changes as time goes on.
You're, you're more against the, or, or the reduction of the Watergate Shopping Link? Other than the San, you have a problem with the San Pablo?
No, I, I, the route, the new route is fantastic.
Right.
It's, it's just taking out the, the, the five minute extra time that it takes the people at PPP to get to the BART station, is if we can eliminate that, you're, you're really helping out the highest concentration of residences. And, and we really need to do that. And I think this also ties in with a, a more direct connection to the Transit Center, even though it's on the other side of the pedestrian bridge. This, this could be, you know, a, a quick link between the Transit Center and the BART station.
Yeah. Then on the other hand, there are a lot of senior citizens in Watergate, and they take the bus to, to go shopping, and particularly to the new Target store. And that's on 40th Street. And with this new route, they'd have to transfer at 40th and Pablo and take another bus back down, you know, it gets fairly complicated.
You mean with a new route that has been adjusted?
Yeah.
So you're saying, keep all of them? Okay.
Well, I, I think it needs a lot of study.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, the ETMA has to decide whether they can afford to do that also.
I think it'll be an interesting experiment, actually, if this route is implemented, to measure the travel time on it. Because my, my guess would be that during the peak times, that this is, this new route is probably a faster route from Watergate to BART than the Watergate Express is on the freeway at peak times?
No, no, it's not, because they're going across, I use it all the time, and they don't have, you know, they're not on the freeway very long, and they just work their way across and get off at MacArthur. So that, you know, it, it works, and particularly coming back, it's, it's very fast.
My sense is that there's support for a new route, that we understand that there is further refinement that should be done as time goes by, and maybe that's how we should frame it.
I think that's good.
Okay, how about moving the Christie carpool area to the bus stop?
And this, this is another one that, that I propose, because just my observations of when things changed, where the, the bus stop location changed, but the casual carpool didn't. And really what we want people to do, and I've experienced this when I work in the city, is that when you walk out the door, you want to take the first available thing that comes along, whether it be the, the TransBay J-Bus, or the Emery Go Round, or casual carpool. It's, so if we can put these all in, in one location, that would really facilitate that. Because right now, I walk in one direction, because I think that there's going to be a car that's going to stop at the casual carpool, and then I look back, and it's like, oh, here's the Emery Go Round. And then I, I'm like, running to get from one to the other.
Is that ever confusing for the, the, I mean, I'm just curious if there's any confusion? I mean, that seems like there's a lot of people waiting in one place for different modes of transit. If I'm understanding correctly, like, some people wait for the bus unless a casual carpool car comes, and then they might take that car?
Right. And, and kind of the way the casual carpool works is, there might be a queue of people standing there on a, in the peak times, and a car pulls up, and the people that are standing there, if they're not waiting for the bus, they get in the car, basically. And if they don't want to take the casual carpool, they'll, they'll stand there and, until that car fills, basically.
I would note that Diana told me that when she was out there surveying the situation, she, she found people standing at the casual carpool pickup point, waiting for a casual carpool, and then the bus would come along and stop at the bus stop, and those people would miss the bus, because they wouldn't be able to run over to the bus stop in time. By the time the bus came and left, they would have missed it. So putting the two closer together would allow people more options.
Well, that's why it works at Watergate, and it works very easily there.
It'll allow them to hang out at the coffee shop right there, too. As opposed to No Man's Land over there.
This proposal makes sense. This is an easy one.
Seems to be consensus on that, so that's two down.
Okay, next question.
We're supporting that. Got to orchestrate these here. Okay. Consolidating the Emery Go Round stops, I think that that makes perfect sense, as long as we are tracking the ridership to understand. My understanding is that AC Transit's optimum spacing is about 1,000 feet, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We have a, a target range, actually, of 800 to 1,200 feet, so it's a little, it's a little less than a quarter mile. But we have been trying to consolidate stops where they're really close, and it's often controversial, and, but, yeah, we try to make it some kind of reasonable balance between access and speed.
What stops on this map would we eliminate for the Emery Go Round?
I don't know.
If you take that quarter mile line, and you try to find spaces that are, stops that are within it, actually, the one we were just talking about, the carpool, is between two stops. And the Emery Go Round does stop there.
We have almost no stops on, no stops on Shellmount between Powell and 65th.
Right.
Right.
That's because those are so close together, it's like a couplet.
Shellmount and Christie.
Okay, but it doesn't give you the option of getting off at a bus stop and crossing at the, to the AC tran- to the train station.
Right.
What I, I talked to, oh, I forget if it was Emery Go Round or the people at the Public Market. There's been construction there, and there is, they're building this green living room, and there is thought of reinstating the stop there, at the east-west side of the Amtrak Bridge. There are, we're, there are still signs, I think, for both services that say the stop is not in service right now.
Right, if there's a stop there with a sign.
We do hope that those will get reinstated.
And that's right there. Yeah. Yeah, you know that one. Well, it's not there now.
I think that we should give direction in this document to continue to monitor where the ridership is coming from and going to, and to consolidate stops that are underused, and maintain stops at either highly-used places, or places that are serving seniors, or, you know, where there's a reason to have stops closer together, that seems acceptable, but that we should continue to evaluate the spacing of the stops on the Emery Go Round for efficiency and for access. Okay.
Yep.
Next?
Move on.
Diana? One more question, two more questions?
So the next question.
Did you get that one?
Yeah.
Good.
The Restore 57 west of San Pablo question, which is on... Hold on just a second.
Is that a strategy?
Seven.
So this is an issue of whether it's worth it to duplicate a route, because there's a need for a transfer to use the routes, right?
Yeah. Clearly, more routes is better, everybody likes not having a transfer, but the question is, if AC Transit were to get more money, and with Measure B, if it gets approved as an expansion, they might get a little more money? Would we rather extend the 57 and duplicate the services we have on 40th and Shellmount, or would we rather restore some frequencies? Or would we rather extend some service past midnight? Or what would our priorities be? Would they be extending the 57, or would they be something else?
Is that, could this work with F, too, or is that a whole separate?
Well, the F actually goes there. That's one of the things that duplicates this. It goes on Shellmount and 40th, and up a little ways alongside the 57th, and then the F turns left and goes up Market.
And Commissioner Shulman's suggestion makes it even, in my opinion, more usable. So 57 would be, if we, if we consider F and 57 as together?
If we move the F north, then the 57 would provide service on 40th all day.
All day, okay.
Do we have any information about the ridership of the 57 when it, when it did make that route?
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have it with me. We, we did look at it, it wasn't an enormous number, and it was something that Emery Go Round could accommodate. I mean, we could get it to you if, if it was important.
It didn't seem to be that high. And basically, because if, if people had the choice between taking the free Emery Go Round or taking the 57, unless they were coming from further away.
Yeah, what, what we weren't seeing, we weren't seeing a lot of through ridership from further east on the 57. We're seeing most of those passengers either got off at BART or got off by San Pablo, so it wasn't, that's why we, and, and what was great about this one is, since Emery Go Round's, there's a transfer to a free service, whereas a lot of times, we wind up, you know, cutting routes, and people have to transfer, and there's a transfer charge and all that, but that didn't come into play here.
I'm comfortable with deleting the Restore 57, it sounds like it was underused, and that we have a service.
I, I agree.
I agree.
Do, do we want to comment on what, if we don't restore the route, kind of what the priorities would be instead of doing that?
Well, the Emery Go Round, several routes go right by there, so they could take the Emery Go Round and transfer at that point.
But if it were an AC Transit thing, so if AC Transit got more funding, what could we do with it, kind of thing? I would like to see the F, you know, the frequency of the F, if we could shift that to 20 minutes from every half hour. The F has so much potential.
I agree. You've convinced me, John.
All right, anybody have, have any other thoughts on that one? Okay.
The only thing I would say, I mean, I think it's good to start that conversation. If, if B3 gets on the ballot and passes, there will be time, and there will be public hearings, to, to think about what the, what the priorities are, and obviously, we'll be looking on a district-wide basis. But we will be looking at things like, what are lines that should run more frequently and all that.
Okay. And I think you have one more question on there.
So that's about the F.
Oh, the moving.
Which I don't think we've decided.
Well, I think this question really is for Emeryville's benefit, to make it faster. But if you look at this map, there's a lot of stops in west, in north Oakland, which is a lower-income area, where more people are dependent on bus transportation. And if we move it to Powell, we cut all those stops out.
But I think there's also the 88, and those people, I think, are within walking distance of other lines that connect to the BART stations, so I...
They might not necessarily be BART users.
But, but again, we have to, we have to put transportation and land use together. It's that, we have to serve the highest-density areas with good transit.
And getting a route to downtown Berkeley is, I think, important.
Well, BART is the fastest way now.
Living in the furthest, most eastern, northern part of Emeryville, I live in the pink, the last pink dot. And I went to Berkeley for three years, and I took whatever bus came first, the 88 or the F, out on Market to go to Berkeley, and, and then would take the F sometimes to get to San Francisco. But generally, I would say 99.9% of the time, walked, because it was faster for me to walk to BART than it would be to walk over to catch an Emeryville down by Pixar. So I would support this idea of serving more, you know, from an Emeryville standpoint, obviously. There's obviously a lot of people in that Oakland neighborhood that might think otherwise, and might rely on the F, but they might, it's not nearly it, and it's a single-family neighborhood, and the whole area all the way, until you hit MLK.
Well, as, as I look at this map, though, I, I think...
I'm sorry, what is it you would support?
The rerouting of the F?
To go up Powell.
To go up Powell, correct.
As I look at this map, though, it, it actually looks to me like we would be serving less people with the rerouting, because we would basically lose a connec- a connection, you know, the bus service within half a mile to everyone south of 45th Street, essentially, in Emeryville. And we would pick up some single-family homes in the far, kind of northeast corner. We would pick up Glass House, so that's kind of one, that's kind of one concentration of units. We would pick up a couple, a couple of buildings at, at Watergate, that are right now on the edge of the half-mile, they would be, it looks like they would be just within it, if the, that's basically a, a function of moving the, the stops to the, to the freeway. So as I see it, there, there's some really good things that are in this proposal, and in what Commissioner Sherman has proposed, that wouldn't necessitate moving the route, actually. I think there's some, some great things that could be done to this existing route, that would both speed it up and improve access for people. Namely, that I think a lot of the stops on Market and 40th could be, could be condensed and eliminated. I mean, just, just looking at, on 40th, you know, there probably should be a stop at San Pablo, and there probably should be a stop at Hollis, and then, you know, the next stop probably doesn't need to be until the one in front of Bay Street. Then I think tho- I think that the, the stops under the freeway could be, or in that general vicinity, could be added to this route, whether, they would probably have to be somewhere right on, or no, they actually could be essentially right where they, right where those new green dots are proposed, because the, that red route does run right there existing. And then the other thing that I think is great is the, the loop in, in the towers that enables the route to use the, the San Francisco-only on-ramp, which I do think would reduce the, the travel time to San Francisco quite a bit during heavy traffic times, during peak times on the freeway. So, and the other point I want to make is that this, the existing route, the red, serves the, the transit hub, which is identified in the general plan as a transit hub, at 40th and San Pablo, which is existing our current highest concentration of transit lines. I, I believe there are no fewer than eight regular AC Transit routes that stop there, as well as one all-nighter route. And that is, is the highest concentration, so it does provide the most amount of, of connections and transfers. and transfers to the F, which I think is important. And, you know, I will divulge, I live right there, so this route would eliminate, the proposed route would eliminate the F as an option for me to get both to San Francisco and downtown Berkeley. And I know people, a lot of people actually use the F from that location. I know it's an option to Bart, but I do see a lot of people standing out front waiting for the F. And I know that there was a proposal, I think there was a proposal, to change the route, essentially to this, when AC Transit did their most recent route changes. Nathan can probably correct me. But I know that there was a lot of concern. There were, like, flyers put up in the area of people that were opposed to that change, actually, because they relied on the F quite a bit.
Let me just comment to that. I think this is a redundant route, though, because you've got the Emery Go Around that basically goes 40th and Shellmount, and you've got the 88 that goes, I'm not sure if it goes Market or Adeline.
Mark.
So you've got the 88 that provides service to downtown Berkeley, and you've got access to Bart that gets people to the city. Again, what I'm trying to really strengthen here is that connection to the highest residential area, highest-density residential area in Emeryville, and provide the best service for that. And connect to the Amtrak station, which I think is another, you know, just in our transit system in general, is the Capitol Corridor is a really wonderful thing, but that last-mile connection to it, in a lot of cases, doesn't work very well. And I think this is a way that we could strengthen that.
Yeah, and there is some additional housing going in at Hollis and Powell in the next year and a half to two years. Paper mill, 200-plus units, which will probably be 300-plus people in an area that is not served by any transit, really, except for the Hollis. I guess the Hollis Emery Go Around. Yeah, the Hollis Emery Go Around, right.
So this would be the time to coordinate a bus stop.
Right.
How's it that?
Chair Donaldson?
Yes?
Sorry, I have a question for Nathan. The proposal for the F bus to make the U-turn on Powell and then to use the San Francisco-only on-ramp, I believe Commissioner Sherman's diagram, if I understood it correctly, had the bus going west on Powell and then turning into the Watergate offices, and then looping through there, and then coming back and taking a left on Powell and getting onto that on-ramp. How, maybe you don't know this, but I'm wondering how feasible is it for an AC Transit-sized bus to drive into the Watergate offices and then essentially make the U-turn and come back?
There's the turnaround.
I know, I know there's that traffic circle there. I'm just trying to envision an AC Transit bus going around that traffic circle.
I can't answer that tonight, but we'd have to look at it. I have to say that any time we see those kind of deviating loops, we're concerned because they do take time, and they're also a psychological issue for people up the route. But we would have to really look at, you know, one, is it physically feasible to do that? And even if it is physically feasible, you know, how long would it take? Where would it stop? I think, you know, the idea of running a route straight across Powell was pretty attractive to us, because it did seem like that's a quicker way to serve a lot of people in Emeryville. But, you know, the loops would be a whole kind of separate investigation. You know, in a way, you've kind of, I mean, if there's a... Well, I'll stop there.
I think using that other on-ramp would definitely save you time.
Yeah.
Especially during peak hours.
Yeah.
My question was only about physically, can the bus, especially, I don't know if you use articulated buses on the F, but, you know, some of those big buses, can they make it around that traffic circle at Watergate? And maybe they can, I don't know.
Well, I think an alternative to that traffic circle would be turning up Frontage Road and making a left into the complex and then coming back out on Powell.
That's true. You'd probably have to get the property owner's permission, since those are all private streets, but...
Yeah, and a question would be, private streets are not necessarily built to city streets. It's a whole operational question that there are people who do these things.
It sounds like we're all trying to find a more efficient, effective way to serve the most people in the town of Emeryville with AC Transit going to San Francisco and Berkeley without duplicating efforts. And it sounds like there are a lot of technical issues and questions that we don't have the information to actually direct someone on a specific route and a specific stop. So I would just suggest that we express it that way and try to move forward from here.
Yeah, maybe what we could do is, for the Strategies, Strategy TS4, where it says, currently it says, "Extend AC Transit from Christie-Powell area to downtown Berkeley. Publicize local fairs on transbay routes." If we change that wording to say, "Modify AC Transit F Route to better connect North Bayfront and Towers with downtown Berkeley and San Francisco," and then "Publicize local fairs," which I think leaves it open.
Yeah, that could be accomplished by making adjustments that Commissioner Moss was talking about, or routing down Powell Street, or whatever. But that's what we're trying to do. So that seems like, with those policy directions that we have come up with, is there a motion to recommend that this go forward to the City Council for adoption?
I move that we recommend it to the City Council.
Second that.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, the second was Commissioner Moss. Okay. Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Yes.
Chair Donaldson?
Yes.
Seven ayes, it's unanimous. We will forward your recommendation for adoption to the City Council.
And thank you for all of that work in consolidating the input. You've done a really good job of going out and getting a lot of information. There's a lot of good, the background report has a lot of really interesting stuff in it, and...
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
I really appreciate, I'm sorry. I really appreciate all Diana's time on this. We've had a lot of email exchanges, and the meeting that we had with the ad hoc committee was very helpful and great work with staff.
That was it for our public hearings. We have a study session on the bicycle and pedestrian plan. We'd like to take a four-minute break until 8:30. Dropping like flies, okay.
One Commissioner.
We have a study session on the pedestrian and bicycle plan, which Deborah has been working on for a long time with a lot of people, so I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. We're pleased to be here tonight to present the commission with the draft Emeryville pedestrian and bicycle plan. In 2010, the city approved a contract with Alta Planning and Design to develop a new plan for pedestrian bicycle facilities and programs. And Brett Hondorp is here tonight, as is Lucas Woodward, and Brett's going to be helping me with the presentation. They're both from Alta. So I'll be presenting some introductory slides, and then Brett will walk you through the implementation strategy of the plan. And then, following the presentation, we're here to hear your comments and answer any questions you may have. So the 1998 Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan was projected to be in effect until 2010, and the general plan adopted in 2009 provides newer guidance for pedestrian and bicycle planning and calls for an update of the pedestrian and bicycle plan every 10 years. So work on this plan started in September 2010. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee provided guidance through the planning process, and there's been an active technical advisory committee from planning and building, public works, and police department staff. As soon as Alta was on board, they hit the ground running with a very active public outreach program. There were a number of events that activated the community and captured lots of detailed information and ideas. The user survey was available online and on paper, and the first community workshop was held early on in the process to get initial ideas. And then, one held last spring was to get public feedback on a preliminary list of improvement projects and programs. The survey and community events were both announced via postcards that were mailed to all city addresses. Also, early in... Oops, sorry, I'm on the wrong. Skip to slide. Also, in the early phase of the project, Alta, working with Fair and Peers as a subconsultant, produced a series of technical reports to feed into the draft plan. They analyzed existing policies and described existing conditions in terms of pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The transportation profile reported on the results of the survey and travel patterns documented from other sources. Prior to the development of this plan, there had been much interest in the Horton and Overland Bicycle Boulevard. So the scope of work for this project specifically included an analysis of bicycle boulevards, how they function in other cities, and recommendations for treatments to improve bicycle travel along these streets. So all the information from these technical studies fed into a comprehensive list of improvements and programs, which was vetted by the community and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee.
So Deborah, are these studies also available on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan website?
Yes, yes, they are.
Page?
A public review draft was distributed in November and reviewed by the BPAC over a course of three meetings. The Development Coordinating Committee, the Staff Committee, reviewed the plan at their December 14 meeting, and on January 19, the Public Works Committee reviewed the public review draft plan, and then it was reviewed by the Transportation Committee on January 24. So comments from all of these reviews have been incorporated into the study session draft that you have in your packets. The document is comprised of four parts. An executive summary, Part One, which provides some, kind of the basis of the plan, Part Two, which is really the implementation strategy, and then a series of appendices. And as I mentioned in the staff report, the appendices will be a separate document when the plan comes forward for adoption. Since they include non-policy information and some information that may change over the life of the plan, it is not intended that they be formally adopted as part of the plan, but accepted as supporting information. So I'm going to quickly describe what's in Part One, which is the first three chapters, and then turn it over to Brett to do a presentation on Part Two, the implementation strategy. Chapter One describes the purpose of the plan, summarizes the benefits of walking and biking, and lays out the process for how the plan was developed. Chapter Two sets forth the vision, goals, and policies. Many of the policies are derived from the general plan, but new policies have been added, and these are highlighted by being underlined text. And Chapter Three, which is about existing conditions and documents the needs, it describes the opportunities for improvement and barriers to pedestrian and bicycle travel, and it also summarizes travel patterns and includes the findings from the public outreach exercises. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brett, and he's going to walk you through the rest of it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brett Hondorp with Alta Planning and Design. And I'm going to run through the Part Two of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, which is the implementation strategy. So this slide just shows kind of the outline of the contents of that. It includes recommendations on programs, non-infrastructure recommendations. And then we have our infrastructure recommendations broken out into a variety of categories. Citywide improvements, projects that cover kind of broader citywide categories, and then specific projects for bicycle boulevards, a number of site-specific projects. And then we finish out with discussion of funding and implementation strategies. So the programmatic chapter, this is really covering all of the non-engineering E's, so the other four E's of our typical five E's approach to doing bicycle and pedestrian planning. So it covers encouragement, enforcement, education, and then evaluation. And then we included some specific recommendations focused around maintenance, recommendations, and bicycle sharing. And so encouragement recommendations include events to just get people really jazzed up and excited about walking and bicycling. So these are things like car-free streets, such as occurred in Oakland a couple of years ago, safe routes to school programs, which the city is already working with the Alameda County Partnership on. County Partnership on, and then Walk and Bike to Work Day, another event that the city already participates in annually. So really supporting these types of activities is a great way to encourage residents to continue to walk or bike, or to try walking and bicycling for transportation or recreational purposes. Enforcement programs include things like bicycle patrols, targeted enforcement, which are things like pedestrian stings, and then, community-based traffic efforts. Education programs, these are programs that are largely done through organizations such as the East Bay Bicycle Coalition. So the plan just recommends continued city support of those activities to make sure that both adults and children are being trained on the rules of the road and safe bicycling behaviors. And then, finally, evaluation is a very important E in terms of tracking your progress to achieving your plan's goals. So we do recommend monitoring, regular monitoring of the progress of the bike plan, and that includes doing traffic counts at least every other year, particularly along the bicycle boulevard areas where we want to be tracking, and making sure those traffic volumes aren't getting to a level where the street becomes uncomfortable for bicyclists to ride. And then, making recommendations for things like doing a report card every few years to sort of, again, track your progress towards increasing your numbers of bicyclists and pedestrians, increasing the number of miles of facilities that you're putting on the ground, and just seeing how you're meeting all those great goals that we've put up front in the plan. The plan did have a specific section on bicycle sharing. So bike sharing is kind of what we call sort of personal public transit, where you have these, at least this kind of current generation, you have different stations, and you can check out a bike from one station and park it back at another station. And there's types of programs that are becoming very popular all around the world, and indeed in the U.S. And there's a regional program that's going to be launched in the Bay Area starting this summer, focused on San Francisco to San Jose. So we looked at a bit of a localized program in Emeryville to see how that might work, and came up with a number of recommendations for where bike-sharing stations could be cited. And because of the density of large employers, it actually could make sense to have a system in Emeryville. And I think this is, it's a great study, because we know that the San Francisco Regional Program is really thinking of themselves as a pilot. They definitely want to expand to the East Bay. And so the fact that you guys already have this, you know, kind of mini-feasibility study done, when that pilot starts to expand, I think you'll, you know, you can really be, you know, hitting the ground running in terms of maybe getting into that system as it expands to the East Bay. So this map just shows some of the locations that we propose. And again, you know, we looked at it sort of employer-focused, but if you looked at this in the context, text of a larger system, I think you could even start to fill in some of those stations a little more densely. The next section, Chapter Five, talks about the various citywide improvements. And so these include, for pedestrians, signalized intersection improvements, looking at countdowns, treatments for uncontrolled crossings, ways to enhance the safety at crossings, parklets. And I should mention, on the pedestrian crossings, or the signals, we did hear through our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee that issues like pedestrian wait times are very important. So we have included some recommendations about decreasing those pedestrian wait times at the intersection. So again, you know, really wanting to prioritize walking and biking through our efforts in this plan. Parklets, additional directional signage, so just types of facilities and infrastructure that support the walking environment. For bicycles, again, signal detection, very important. There is a state requirement now that all, you know, signalized intersections include detection for bicyclists, so making sure that Emeryville complies with that, and that those signals are maintained as well. So if you have the loop detectors or the videos, that they are maintained, and a bicyclist will trigger the signal when they approach the intersection. The signage, bicycle parking, looking at options for providing additional bicycle parking, things like bike corrals, which take a motor vehicle on-street space, convert that to a series of bike parking, up to 10 or 12 bike parking spaces that are in the street, and can just provide additional parking at destinations. Chapter Six was focused on bicycle boulevards, and this was something that was, you know, written into our scope of work. We knew it was an important element of the plan, was looking at the current and future bicycle boulevard network. And I should say that a bicycle boulevard is a street that's prioritized for bicycle travel, where the intent is to emphasize bike travel and de-emphasize motor vehicle travel through design and traffic calming features. And so I'm sure you're familiar with the network that you do have in Emeryville. And there was a desire to look at that bicycle boulevard network and see if there were certain thresholds that should be applied at which a street would or would not be classified as a bike boulevard. And those thresholds are related to motor vehicle speeds and volumes. The idea being, at some level, of motor vehicle volumes and motor vehicle speeds kind of get too high to be really compatible with that idea of bicycle priority, and that you should either do something about those motor vehicle speeds and volumes, try to bring them down, or you should say, "Well, this street just really doesn't make sense as a bike boulevard," and kind of take it out of that classification. So we did a really broad study of cities across the U.S. that have bike boulevard networks, places like Austin and Portland, elsewhere, to get an idea of whether they had similar kind of metrics or thresholds, and what they applied as a number of, kind of maximum number of vehicles per day that they would accept on a bike boulevard at a maximum speed. We took that information and brought it back to our group, and came up with the goals you see here. And so what we came up with for Emeryville for motor vehicle speeds were that, on bicycle boulevards, you should have a speed posted of 20 miles an hour. And the idea that pretty much every street in Emeryville is posted at 25, bike boulevard is that, again, that priority, so you should provide a little lower speed limit for your bike boulevard streets. And then, if you actually did a survey and measured the speeds out there, you'd have an 85th percentile of no greater than 22. So that gets at that evaluation, that you're actually, you're posting it at 20, but you're going out and evaluating and seeing, okay, what are motorists actually driving on the street? And they're driving no more than 22, based on a speed survey. And then, for --
So when you do that, you go out and you get, you see how fast people are actually going, and then the idea would be that you would either post it lower or do some kind of traffic calming measures to make sure that they keep within that range?
Exactly. So if you measured your 85th percentile at 25, you'd know that you were exceeding your threshold, and you had to do something to lower it through some traffic calming. Exactly. And then, a similar concept with the volumes. For traffic volumes, we did kind of delineate a line, looking at the part of Emeryville east of Hollis versus west of Hollis, recognizing there's different land uses. And you are just, because of those land uses, the more industrial character, you're going to have greater traffic volumes. You do have greater traffic volumes west of Hollis. So we set that threshold at 3,000 vehicles per day. East of Hollis, the more single-family residential areas, much lower traffic volumes, so we set that threshold at 1,500 vehicles per day for bicycle boulevard streets. So this map just shows your current and proposed bike boulevard network. They're in purple. Solid lines are existing, and the dash lines are proposed. And so, as you were saying, Chair Donaldson, the idea is if you exceeded those thresholds, you'd start to apply some of these traffic calming designs to your bike boulevards to try to lower those speeds and lower those traffic volumes, and get you back to a street character that was more conducive to the idea of prioritized bike travel. And we've kind of defined those traffic calming treatments, or bike boulevard treatments, in different levels, starting from very most basic, which is really just some signage and markings, going into kind of traffic calming, like speed humps and deflection, and, you know, traffic circles, to Level Five, which is really full traffic diversion, like what you'd see in Berkeley, where you actually have full or partial street diversions, where only bicyclists can travel through, and motor vehicles are diverted. So those are your kind of levels of treatment. And for any of these, the idea is that you would sort of incrementally do them. You're not going to start with a Level Five, likely. You're going to start to, you know, you're already really at Level One slash Two with all your bike boulevards, so you start to go into that Level Three, see how things work. You test it. You do traffic studies. You know, you're really testing and making sure, seeing how it's going to affect the flow of circulation in the area, put things in temporarily. It's easy to put sort of temporary posts and epoxy things down that can easily be removed before you go in and do the full kind of engineering treatment. So you kind of do an incremental approach to studying this. Chapter Seven were the site-specific projects. So we had both pedestrian and bicycle projects. Pedestrian projects included a number of specific crossing improvements. And so these were specific locations that we had learned about, either through our fieldwork, through the field surveys, the walking and biking audits we did, and then just all the feedback we got through the process, we learned about, you know, specific feedback on a crosswalk that needed improvement, or a corner that was, you know, too wide, or something like that. So that's what these projects reflect, are those very specific locations. They're all included in the plan. They're noted on the maps. There's numbers. There's descriptions of the actual projects. We have crossing improvements. I'll just go through each one. And just a summary here of the kind of mileage of the various types of projects, both bicycle and pedestrian. So we have about a little over two miles of sidewalk gap closures, so those are locations where there's no sidewalk currently, opposing new sidewalk. Just under one mile of new pedestrian-only path. A little over two miles of Class One multi-use path, which is bicycle and pedestrian, multiple purpose. Little over a half-mile of new bike lanes, almost a mile of new bike route, which is just signed, and a little over a mile of new bicycle boulevard. So, you know, Emeryville's a small city, you're not getting tons and tons of mileage, but these are all nice little enhancements and kind of tweaks to your existing network. And then, these maps just show those various categories of projects. So you can see, these are the crossing improvements, the specific crossing locations. And again, these all correspond to a table in the plan that has an actual description of the detailed or proposed, you know, engineering improvements that would go at these locations. Corridor enhancements, which cover kind of more green streets or longer segments of roadway that had multiple types of improvements. The pedestrian pathways. Sidewalk gap closures, which, you know, kind of are various places throughout the city. The transit stop improvements, which include, you know, larger kind of transit hubs, and then down to the level of detail of single bus stop improvements. And then, we have the same idea for the bicycle projects. And again, we have kind of linear corridor bike facilities, as well as specific intersection improvements. So this map shows the proposed bikeway network. So again, it's the Class One multi-use paths, the Class Two bike lanes, the Class Three signed routes, and then the bicycle boulevards that comprise your bicycle network. And then, a number of intersection improvements, and those could be things ranging from enhancing that signal detection that we talked about, to maybe putting a bike lane pocket, striping an area for a bike lane, a bicyclist to position themselves at the intersection that's away from turning or through traffic. And then, finally, the funding and implementation chapter. We have a summary of the costs. We talk about Emeryville's past expenditures on the previous plan leading up to this. We identify funding sources, and then, we have our action plan and our implementation steps. And the one piece that we don't currently have, but we will have shortly, are the priority project sheets. We've developed a couple of them. We're going to fill out basically our top priority projects. We're going to develop, like you see on the screen, as a detailed engineering, kind of conceptual engineering plan, but it's the type of thing that you can, that the city can use to go after grant funding. And in fact, these types of sheets were used for the city's successful safe routes to school application over the summer, and a safe routes to transit application. So you had two projects already that got funded out of this plan, which is great. This is a summary of costs over the 10 years of the plan. And we've broken it out into a few different categories, just so you can see where some of the larger cost items are. About half a million for just your overall education, encouragement, enforcement programs, not including bike sharing. A bike sharing program does have a bit of a higher sticker cost, and usually, a couple million. And those are the types of programs that will generally have sponsorship or other types of funding. So, you know, that would be something that the city wouldn't bear the cost of directly, generally. We have a number of bridge projects, which have fairly high price tags, so we've pulled those out. The 65th Street Bridge, close to 20 million. The South Bayfront Bridge, 13 and a half million. And then, all the other site-specific projects total about 24 million. So you can see, you know, those bridges are a very significant component of any type of plan of this nature. And then, the total cost over the 10 years, about $60 million. With annual maintenance, if you were to build the whole thing out, about $80,000 per year. We finish with just a description of funding, available funding sources. And again, this can kind of help focus in on certain grant programs that may be available that could be targeted for specific projects. And then, our action plan, which really supports the policies that were identified early on in the plan, is just providing some, the specific actions and the responsibilities. So you have the responsible department within the city identified as to who's going to take that on. And then, separate from the plan are the appendices. These are really the kind of the technical resource documents that just support the work that went into the master plan. That includes design guidelines for both pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Our original bicycle boulevard memorandum, the plan includes kind of a condensed version of sort of the recommendations, but we have a longer version of kind of all of our background research and all the case studies included in that Appendix C. Bicycle transportation account compliance is just a Caltrans checklist, so that your plan will get certified by Caltrans, and then, Emeryville will be eligible for a funding source called the Bicycle Transportation Account. And then, finally, consistency with the general plan. And we should note that we have realigned a couple of the routes that were identified in your most recent general plan bicycle map, so those would require an amendment to the general plan. I can think of a couple of policy changes as well, that were just small tweaks, but there would be an amendment to the general plan required for those items. And this is just a screenshot from the design guidelines. Next steps are March 20, the study session for the City Council. If all goes well, hopefully, back in front of you all on April 26 for action, and then, hopefully, a May 15 adoption. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Wow, that's impressive. Very in-depth. I'm overwhelmed.
I have a really quick question on a bicycle boulevard that you show. Potential bicycle boulevard on 45th Street between Adeline and San Pablo, and then, in the appendices, back in C-18, it shows 47th Street, adjacent to 45th Street, obviously, as a Class Two bicycle lane. I know that street has a diversion to stop traffic from going all the way through. Do you know offhand, or maybe somebody else, Sean, or somebody knows why 45th Street was chosen as a potential bicycle boulevard over 47th Street, which seemed to, has been adding a lot of amenities to slowing down the traffic, and really seems like a more likely boulevard street?
45th is an existing bike boulevard to the west of San Pablo.
Right.
So that was sort of viewed as just a logical extension of that alignment, connecting through to the east side. And then, with that project in place, the bike lane on 47th was seen as somewhat of a redundant facility. So we did discuss it quite a bit, and just decided to take it off the map, to not actually remove the bike lane, but just in terms of the overall kind of network, that it just, it didn't really serve as a connection that was as critical, once you had that 45th facility going all the way through.
I guess I would just comment, and maybe it's too late or not, or maybe it's, the discussion is open, that getting across 47th Street at San Pablo, first of all, riding down 47th Street, which is much more ample, has speed bumps, nobody's going down there anymore because of the blockage, and getting across the street because there's a light, and then you're going around that 47th Street, and then, connection on that small portion of Doyle, there's nobody, nobody drives down there. And I bike myself that way. And 45th Street, on the other hand, is a very active street. Why we put the roundabouts in has slowed down that traffic, and certainly, people are going to bike on it. But making the jog from 47th Street across, we avoid it. I know everybody in my community avoids it. 47th Street just seems like a more logical choice, even though it's a little more of a distance away from that bicycle boulevard established on 45th.
You mean the jog across San Pablo Avenue with the offset on 45th?
It's nearly, well, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but for a novice bicycle, if you're with your kids and you're calling that a bicycle boulevard, getting across there would be very difficult, as opposed to waiting at the light.
We do have that intersection identified as a project, so the idea is that, really, for that to be a proper bike boulevard continuously across San Pablo, is you would need some enhancement to that current, you know, jogged crossing to improve.
Part of the thinking here also is that --
Part of the thinking here also is that 47th Street west of San Pablo, I earlier, in context of the Sustainable Transportation Plan, mentioned that the Center for Community Life is gonna be short on parking, and so it's important to get more people on transit. What parking they are going to have for a facility that's much bigger and more intense than what's on the high school site now, is mainly gonna be there on 47th Street. The plan essentially calls for turning that street into a parking lot with 90-degree parking on both sides. It'll still be a city street, open to traffic, but it'll function as a big parking lot. And it will also have a surface parking lot on the school site that will feed off of that block of 47th Street. It just didn't seem conducive to a bike boulevard. I know today, there's not a lot of traffic on it, but in the future, it could be a real mess for, it didn't, it didn't seem like a good fit for a bike boulevard, whereas taking 45th Street just straight across San Pablo all the way to Adeline seemed more logical. The intersection is a problem. I know that. I go through that intersection on my bike almost every day, and it's not a lot of fun. And that's why it's been identified as something that needs to be fixed. It's not an easy answer here. And as Brett said, we would leave the edge lines on 47th Street. It probably just wouldn't be designated as a bike lanes anymore, but you could certainly still ride that way if you wanted to.
Yeah, I just, the earlier, like I said back on C-18, I liked that, I liked the way it was drawn up there, that 47th Street was a Class 2. But I wanted to know the reasoning, and you're right, it's difficult either way.
It's mainly the ECCL parking thing, I think, that tipped the balance for us.
Yeah, I think, I think Commissioner Flores brings up a good point, and that, and I think I can see kind of both, the concerns of both routes. But I was actually thinking about that today, 'cause I do, that offset at 45th and San Pablo really is awful. I rarely go through it on my bike, but I walk through it regularly, and it's, it is really odd and not convenient. And I think of the, with the current status of things, I was actually just thinking, it would kind of make sense to route the bike boulevard from 45th up Doyle, and that little stretch of Doyle, and on to 47th, and across San Pablo, because that's a much cleaner crossing of San Pablo. But then again, you are, you know, you would be going right through the thick of what will become the, you know, the main parking area for the Center for Community Life. So I think it's kind of a, it's kind of a trade-off as to, you know, whether you, you want that clean crossing, and the, and I think also 47th is a, it is, you made a good point, that there already is a street barrier on it. There's considerably less traffic than there used to be. And there also, there aren't roundabouts, which I think is important to note, 'cause I, I know Berkeley uses roundabouts a lot on their bike boulevards, but I actually think they're less than ideal traffic calming for bike boulevards, 'cause it forces the cars into the, you know, where bikes are normally riding. So that said, I kind of can see the trade-offs of both routes.
Yeah. And, you know, the Temescall Creek Park is up there, and it's just, it's a wider street. But yeah, I guess, once you get into the parking lot. But sometimes if it's a parking lot, they're all parking in certain times of the day, and biking down parking lots can be not so dangerous.
Well, and what's, what's the status on this map? There's a B8, which is a proposed multi-use path that would run between 47th and 45th, just west of San Pablo Avenue. Maybe that's another way to go, to go up 45th Street and then jog over to 47th that way, so that San Pablo could be crossed.
It connects that Pixar park.
The little Pixar thing, yeah.
That's assuming that AC Rapid Transit pulls out of that property, and it becomes a park.
Yeah, that goes through the AC Transit Maintenance Yard.
They'd be optimistic.
Well, we could, we could put it in as a longer-term bike boulevard route.
I think 47th Street should still be classified somehow. People who come down Adeline Street, that's where they go through, and it is a great biking street. But anyway, or at least a dashed Class 2. Why was it on that exhibit shown as a Class 2?
Well, it is an existing Class 2.
Okay, so it's just not shown here as an existing?
Yeah, and so that's what I was, when I said we made some changes to the existing network, that would be one of those changes. That would, that if, if this plan, if figure, my figure numbers, so Figure 7-2, which is the recommended bike network, if that went forward as we're proposing it, the 47th alignment would come off of the designated network.
But I think in either case, we realize that there's no bike boulevards east of San Pablo. And if, even if we leave 47th Street on as a bike route, I think we'd probably want to change it from Class 2 to bike boulevard. And connecting with that little B8 path might make some sense in the long term.
Yeah, so at least showing it dashed isn't a bad idea. I mean, the improvements we've done on Adeline Street are incredible. How many people bike down there commuting is, in the last 10 years, there was, there was nobody 10 years ago, and there's hundreds of bicycles. There's bicycle traffic on Adeline Street that I have to watch out for now. And yes, you know, Charlie, you're one of those people in that traffic.
I'm one of those people trying not to run you over.
I see you every day.
So it sounds like there are enough people that are riding bicycles down 47th, that it would make sense to at least keep it on the map as a Class 2. Is that what I'm hearing?
As a, as a proposed?
Class 2. Well, no, it's, it's an existing Class 2.
Oh, it's an existing Class 2, yeah. But as a proposed bicycle boulevard.
Yeah, I think, I mean, part of it is, we don't want every street in town to be a designated bike route. So we try to avoid having two that are right next to each other. So it's either 45th or 47th, I think. And maybe 47th makes more sense.
Well, if they're both up to 10 years out, maybe showing them both, and then one of them goes away, isn't such a bad idea. If AC Transit goes away, and we get the park, or maybe the parking isn't so bad over there, you know. But 47th Street seems like the more no-brainer.
We don't need AC Transit to go away to get the B8 path. All we need is about 20 feet. So they do park buses in that 20 feet now, so we've gotta redraw their parking lot for them, I guess. Too bad Nathan left.
Yeah, that's right. Send a message.
Paul?
So, other comments?
I had a question about, the proposed overpass at B25, up at the north end on 65th? And if you had done any study about the Ashby Ave interchange, and I know that's Berkeley, but if there's some way to connect to the bayside through working with Caltrans and the City of Berkeley, getting, was that studied at all, or talked about?
65th overpass has been studied through a whole other process, correct? Is that right? I mean, that's funded and...
The Ped Bike Bridge over the freeway at 65th Street? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
We have an approved alignment, approved by Caltrans. We have an official project from Caltrans, which took several years to accomplish. And I believe it's in the environmental document stage, which is not, it's just a categorical exclusion, I think. But they've, right now, the question is to find money to build it.
Right.
And, and design, you know, design it in detail. It's in the general plan. And yeah, this, this effort didn't put much, you know, we didn't, we didn't waste Brett's scope of work studying that further, 'cause it's already been studied and pretty much decided.
Yeah.
And then I had another question about looking at the 7-13 crossing improvement chart. By the way, this is really amazingly detailed and wonderful. Did you consider the, let's see, what is it? C-16 is about the closest sort of thought connected to what I'm gonna say, is a high-vis, is it called scramble phasing crossing?
Uh-huh.
Is that correct?
Correct.
For Shellmount and Christie? There is a problem now, where you, you know, if you're coming down, say, from the Amtrak, and you want to get over to Trader Joe's, you have to wait for two light cycles. And most people are actually diagonally crossing, so, and there's gonna be a bank on the other corner. It just seems like a perfect spot for that. I don't know if that was studied or talked about.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely looked at that as one of the treatments. I mean, one of the drawbacks is it increases the delay for all of the users. And so there's a, there's a pretty big trade-off in terms of, you know, overall traffic circulation. And our understanding for much of that area in the Shellmount and Christie is, traffic is controlled pretty tightly. It's already been kind of squeezed, as much as it can squeeze, just to make that sort of loop function. So, you know, we didn't get into the level of recommending a lot of signal timing phases. I mean, we recommend it in some general locations, but something like that would really need some further study to see how it would impact the overall circulation patterns in that area.
Okay. I understand that B-PAC chairperson would like to make some comments on this as well.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Laura McCamey. I'm the Chair of the B-PAC. And I just wanted to weigh in on the, what you guys were talking about a minute ago, the 45th, 47th, 'cause this is something we discuss quite a bit at the B-PAC. And, and I really appreciate what Chair, Mr. Flores said, 'cause I'm one of those people who uses 47th a lot, too, and I like it much better than 45th, I agree. And so, a couple of thoughts I had, I really appreciated the discussion I just heard, and I love that, that you're suggesting that we keep it on the map. If 47th to the west of San Pablo is going to be a parking lot for the Emeryville, the Center for Community Life, one of the vehicles that we want to park there is bicycles. And so why not make a really nice bike route straight across 47th to the Emeryville, you know, to the Center for Community Life? Why not make that part of what's going there? In fact, to me, that, that's an argument in favor of putting the bike boulevard right across there. It's an easy crossing, and if you want to get people out of their cars, give them a great way to get there. And the other thing I want to say is that, I just wanted to disagree with Charlie and say that I think it's fine if every route in the city is a bike route. Personally, that's my bias. But I think, you know, you would never say, well, we already have a car road there. We don't, why do you need a car road here? You know, why do you need to get there on your car? We wouldn't say that about cars. So, you know, if, if there are advantages to 45th and 47th, why not leave them both as bike routes? That would be my comment on it. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you. And this is, it's not a public hearing, but it's a study session, and if there are other people that want to comment on this, no? Okay. Commissioner's comments.
Well, I think that's well said. That 47th Street, again, in my mind, and having seen the transformation of bicycle use in that, especially in that neighborhood, and that concentrated bicycle use, that 47th Street, regardless of what's happening west of San Pablo, would be a much better bicycle boulevard. And that 45th Street will always be a slow road with the turn, turnabout, or turnstiles, or whatever you want to call them, roundabouts there. 47th Street makes much better sense, and it's connected to the, to the park and everything. So I would suggest, or propose, moving that dash line over and continuing across as the older rendering showed in C-19 or C-18 in the appendices. Otherwise, I think this is incredibly long document. And I'll also take a half a day off, like Gail did, someday in the future, and go through it, because it's pretty intense for a, for a study session to get something like this. And I honestly only got it like Tuesday, 'cause I had the long weekend, and didn't get back from the weekend, and I didn't have a chance to digest it. But as I listen to the speakers, and, and get into it more, it's, it's quite a document to get into, and I'm looking forward to some of it coming to fruition. So thank you for putting it together.
I have a couple of specific comments, and one of them has to do with the policy and recommendations about taking steps to acquire San Pablo Avenue to make it into a green corridor. I think that that can be really problematic, given that it's a state highway all the way up through El Cerrito, and all the way almost to Richmond. So I think it's probably not something that's really likely to happen, but I think that you can frame the language in a way that supports taking steps to make it a green corridor, and a more pedestrian-friendly corridor in other ways. In my day job, I worked on a project on San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito. And El Cerrito, what they did was, they actually acquired the rights to the sidewalks. So from the face of curb back, the, the city owns the sidewalks, and they can do whatever they want with the sidewalks and the fixtures and the furnishings there. And they put in rain gardens along the street as well. And they worked with Caltrans to do bulbouts, and to do, you know, the lit flashing crossings in high pedestrian areas. There was, Caltrans is seemingly becoming a lot more flexible, and I believe has actually adopted a complete streets policy that they now are moving forward with. So in addition to it probably being a long shot that Caltrans would give up a little sliver of a continuous piece of property there, it's also a city obligation to maintain that road once you get it. So that, that's a liability for the city as well. Yes?
If I could just comment, there has been ongoing discussion in the city for years about whether or not to try to get Caltrans to give us San Pablo Avenue. Frankly, I'm not sure what the official city position on that is. But my understanding is that they don't like to give away pieces of state highways that are in the middle of the route. But this, this is State Route 123, which actually ends at our southern border.
Really?
At Interstate 580. So...
I thought it went all the way to downtown Oakland.
No, no, it ends, it ends right at 36th Street. So they might be willing to, say, give away the piece that's between 580 and Highway 13, which is Ashby Avenue, which is another state highway. Or they may be willing to give away the part as far as the Emeryville, northern Emeryville city limit. And then, then it's a state highway from the northern Emeryville city limit to wherever, to Richmond. But this wouldn't be taking a piece out of the middle. It would be just chopping a piece off the end of it.
Even, I believe there actually are a couple of notable precedents for even taking a piece out of the middle. I think, I think the city of Rancho, I think Caltrans turns over to the city of Rancho Mirage, a portion of State Highway 111. And I think that they also turned over to West Hollywood, their portion of, of Highway 2 Santa Monica Boulevard, and those are both kind of in the middle. So there's just not really, you know, as a driver, you don't really notice a difference. I think it still bears the miner's spade shield, but the city did assume maintenance of those.
And did Caltrans actually give up the right-of-way? Oh, interesting.
They turned over control of it and maintenance of it to the cities.
Is that like a vacation?
Okay.
I wouldn't say vacation, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, there is a map that shows the actual boundary of the Caltrans right-of-ways.
I guess my point is more that I would like to see the language a little bit more flexible, to be able to go forward with plans for a more pedestrian-friendly green corridor, whether it's Caltrans or not. So that, that's probably more, more to the point. There's a goal about providing bikeways, parking, walkways to support connections with transit, including the MacArthur and Ashby Bart stations. And I think we should recognize West Oakland, especially since there's that nice route down Mandela Parkway that is used by a lot of cyclists. I noticed on the existing conditions, they were talking about bicycle counts and pedestrian counts at Bay Street. And there's a huge number of pedestrians, clearly, but I'm wondering whether we need to have some policies to encourage more bicycle facilities at Bay Street, so that people can get there more easily, and use it more easily, and leave their bikes around more easily, because it seems like there's a real disparity between the number of people that are biking to Bay Street. I know there's a lot of kids that bike to Bay Street, but maybe we should talk about enhancing the facilities there. Yeah, those, those were my main, my main comments that I had. But I think it's a really, really nicely put-together document. I think you've got a huge amount of information that's gonna be really useful going forward, and having this in place will definitely help us get funding for some of this stuff. help us get funding for some of this stuff. Any other comments?
One thing I may, would mention is that, as, as the commissioner, I believe, is aware, we are also doing a traffic impact fee study. I'm going to update our traffic impact fee so that we can fund not only car projects, but also pedestrian, bicycle, and transit projects. And the two major feeders into that study are this plan and the Sustainable Transportation Plan. The Sustainable Transportation Plan mainly for transit improvements, and this plan, obviously, for pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And following tonight's meeting, the staffs that are working on those various efforts will be putting our heads together in preparation for a study session that you all will be having on the traffic impact fee study at your next meeting. So, you'll be seeing a lot of this stuff again in the context of a real, actual funding mechanism.
So, we'll all have time to actually read the appendices and...
Maybe so.
...find print and everything. Okay.
I guess I just want to say I'm, I'm glad that I actually didn't have to read through this document in this packet go-around, and I actually don't have a lot of additional comments, because all, my comments are actually in the record as a member of the B-PAC. And I just, on that note, I just wanted to thank Laura and the rest of the B-PAC for their really hard work. The, the B-PAC has put a lot of time into this plan, and it's kind of encouraging, actually, because a lot of the same discussion that we've had at the B-PAC meetings is, is very similar to the discussion and, and concerns that are being raised here tonight. And I just have a couple of real minor comments, which are just that I just wanted to make sure that on all of the maps, that the, the Pixar path, the Joseph Emory Park is, is shown as a, as an existing park rather than a future park, and that the, I think, the recent bike lanes that have been added to Emery Street and to Hollis Street, south of, of Fortieth, are shown as, as existing bike lanes.
Right. I think we need to get this plan adopted before any other improvements get made, because we continuously have to modify the plan to keep up with improvements that are being made. Thank you for the comments.
This happened with the general plan, too. If you may recall, we were implementing it before we adopted it, which got a little crazy for staff to try to keep up.
We're ahead of ourselves.
Right.
Anyway, okay, well, thank you very much.
Just, I want to, just to note that, I want to say also thanks to the B-PAC incredible committee, not only with local knowledge, but knowledge of, of what other cities are doing and, and great practices that they're using. I made, basically made my comments at the review sessions that the B-PAC had, and I appreciate staff incorporating a lot of my comments in this, and the, and the work that staff and the consultants have done. This is really great.
I also really do appreciate all the best practices discussion. It's really interesting to see what other cities are doing and what other jurisdictions are doing. So, thank you very much. We have one more item on our agenda, which is our general plan annual progress report.
Okay. Thank you.
She has to go change costumes.
Different hat. Different hat. She needs to get her props.
Okay, so, we're pleased to be here tonight to present the annual progress report on the general plan for the two thousand twelve, eleven calendar year. And I'm here joined with Catherine Furpo from the Economic Development and Housing Department. So, we're reporting both on the general plan and the housing element. And as you know, may know, they're in separate documents, the general plan that was adopted in two thousand nine, which includes all the elements except for the housing element, and then, and then the housing element, which was adopted in two thousand ten. So, Catherine prepared the annual report on the housing element, which was approved by the Housing Committee earlier this month. And this annual report will be reviewed by the City Council at their March twentieth meeting and then forwarded to the state. So, we have a summary presentation, and then Catherine and I will be available for, to answer any questions. So, reporting on the general plan is a state requirement, and the city has reported annually to the Housing and Community Development Department on the progress of the housing element, but this is the second year that there will be a report on the entire general plan. And you may recall that there are seven required elements to a general plan by state law, and this table shows how Emeryville's general plan corresponds to the mandated elements. The mandated elements being on the left, and then the chapters of the general plan being in the right column. And then the housing element is on a separate and shorter update cycle than the other elements, and so it's produced independently of the other elements and housed in a second, separate document. So, I'm going to give you the highlights of what was accomplished during two thousand eleven for each element, starting with the land use element. The zoning regulations are key to implementing, implementing the land use element. In two thousand eleven, the city continued its work toward developing new zoning and subdivision regulations to fit the new general plan, and will be completing the project this year. And of course, until new zoning is in place, we do have interim zoning to implement the element. But also, achievement of the city's land use goals is done through private development and the work of the commission and the Planning and Building Department. And although the , the economy has slowed, last year, there were a number of developments that achieved, that, that advanced during the year. Emery Station West Greenway's went under construction. The Ambassador Housing and Bakery Lofts are in building permit phase, and Esquina Bilingües up and running. And those, those are some of the key projects from last year. For the transportation element, two thousand eleven was a big year. So, here are some of the bigger projects that made progress last year. Tonight, you have discussed the top two bullet items, and then the traffic impact fee study will be coming to you next. The, the connection from the Greenway to Ninth Street in Berkeley was completed. That's another important connection that was made last year. And then, as Charlie mentioned, the I-80 Ped Bike Bridge is still active. The city's working with Caltrans on that project. And although project, progress was made on the South Bay Front Bridge last year, with the loss of redevelopment funds, it will be delayed due to lack of funding. There was significant work done to implement the Parks Open Space Public Facilities and Services element as well. The Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan was adopted by the City Council in January of two thousand eleven, and planning for the Emeryville Center for Community Life continued through the year with five community workshops. And workshops are continuing into this year. The Planning Commission approved plans for the Emeryville Center of the Arts in September. And also, staff has been collaborating with the East Bay Regional Parks District to launch a design project for portions of the Emeryville Crescent in the East Shore State Park. As for urban design, in December, a draft of the Shellmount Street Design Guidelines was completed, and you saw this at your January meeting. And also, the Powell Street Urban Design Plan developed by WRT for improving the Powell Street quarter at I-80 was adopted in April of last year. Agreements with Waste Management of Alameda County for long-term waste collection and disposal took effect in February of two thousand eleven, and these agreements will assist the city in meeting waste diversion mandates. Also, the city is continuing to participate with a number of regional agencies to address the threat of sea level rise. So, these things contribute to the implementation of the Conservation, Safety, and Noise element. And two efforts to implement the sustainability element include the renovation of the Police Department using green building methods, and this was completed last year, and also the Island Earth Farmers Market was in operation on Haven Street for much of the year, bringing locally grown and produced organic food to the neighborhood. Here, we summarize the two thousand eleven activities to implement the housing element. The Magnolia Terrace's project was completed and several other projects involving affordable using units made headway, including Ambassador, Sixty-Fourth and Christie, Parkside, and also purchase of some land for development or future affordable housing. The city continues to implement the housing element through its many ongoing assistance programs, including funding ten housing rehab projects and providing down payment assistance loans and foreclosure prevention assistance for home buyers. So, those are the highlights, and I'll refer you to the tables in the exhibits for a fuller description and tracking of the implementation programs. Chapter eight of the general plan document spells out the implementation program, and in, last year, the city made progress, or completed sixty-five out of the seventy-nine actions, total actions. And this is for a twenty-year plan, so we're making good progress. And it's chapter six of the housing element, which is the grid of the five-year action plan, and Exhibit B in your packet provides a tracking of, of that action plan. And many of the fifty-nine policies and programs reflect ongoing city activities in, in terms of housing, but there are only six programs in the housing element action plan that had no specific action during the calendar year. So, staff is recommending tonight that the Planning Commission forward this on to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. And upon council's approval, the report will be sent to the Office of Planning and Research and the Housing and Community Development Department. So, that concludes our report, and Catherine and I are here if you have questions. Thank you.
I just, I had just had questions on our affordable housing goals and how we're doing. How, how do we do in comparison to other jurisdictions in our area? Because it looks like we're sixty-seven percent through the reporting period, and we're at five percent on the low and very low-income housing.
We are probably above average. It's actually very difficult to find out this information. I've called HCD, State HCD, and A-BAG, and neither of them seem to be able to give me other jurisdictions' housing element progress.
Everybody reporting?
But I'm still trying to get that. I want to point out that by two thousand fourteen, we'll have the Parkside Ambassador and Sixty-Fourth and Christie done. So, we will have about sixty percent of our very low-income arena levels met. We'll still be only about five percent on the low. We don't have any low-income units planned, and we'll be at twenty-one percent of our moderate, and we'll, we'll have exceeded the above moderate, with just those three projects.
And the land that was purchased that's available for future housing, is that going to be having an affordable component as well?
Yes, it will, but it won't be done for this housing element. Won't, it won't make the completion for this housing element period. That's, you know, it won't be done by two thousand fourteen.
I think that's primarily the sites on Christie Avenue, west side of, east side of Christie, south of the park, and also the San Pablo-MacArthur-Golding Gate Lock and Key site. Is that, are there others? Are those the...
Those are the, there's, there's two main areas.
Yeah. So, the city, as successor to the redevelopment agency, assuming the agency's housing functions, is going to be pursuing affordable housing projects on both of those sites, but we don't have any thing specifically proposed as of yet.
So, is there any chance that with the RDA going away, that the city would have to get rid of those?
I don't think so. I don't know. Michael or Catherine, can you, do you want to comment on that?
We believe that we, it's a housing asset that has been transferred to the city. There's one more step in, in to do that, but we, we think that that'll happen. The question is, what's, what's the funding? You know, without, there won't be any additional twenty percent set aside for affordable housing, so that makes funding these projects more difficult. Because as you know, we did the same Ambassador, with Ambassador, we purchased and cleaned the land and lent twelve-point-five million dollars to get those sixty-nine units built. So, we won't have that, we won't have access to that sort of funds going forward.
Are there any other questions about the progress report?
No. Thank you for reporting. So...
I would move to recommend it for approval to the City Council.
I'll second. Uh, shall we do a roll call, or is that by, without objection?
It's unanimous.
Everybody's nodding, so I think you just put us down.
Without objection.
Yes. Well, that was a lot of ground to cover in this meeting, I'd say.
On a long-range planning.
Yeah, yeah. It's good, it's good. I mean, it seems that we are covering a lot of ground, and staff is putting in a huge amount of work, and consultants as well, so, all good. Any commissioner comments?
I have one comment. Last Saturday, I attended the APA, American Planning Association Workshop, which is kind of like Planning Commissioner 101. And it was a really, I think, a valuable experience for me and very helpful. There are, this is a series of three sessions. The, there are two more. The next session is Saturday, April seventh, in El Cerrito, and the third session is Saturday, May fifth, in San Jose.
I believe I forwarded that information to all of you. I can resend it if you wish.
No, you did, yeah.
Y'all got it? Okay, good. Good. I'm glad to hear that somebody went and that it was useful.
Yeah, thank, thank you for sending that.
Sure.
That's good. I just wanted to say that I got a trade magazine, Green Source, a magazine of sustainable design, and it features prominently as a case study, the Cliff Bar retrofit. It has a really nice article in here about all of the sustainable features that are in that building, and, and it's nice to have ourselves featured in, in a, in a magazine like this. Anyway.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Oh, welcome, Sean.
Yeah.
Yes. Welcome aboard. Okay, then, meeting adjourned.